It's a little late, but um.
Okay.
Jack?
Yes.
Amherst Media is here. So and you have all of your members, a couple aren't viewable, but they are all here.
Okay.
You are good to go.
Very good. Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Meeting of July twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. My name is Jack Johnson, and as the Chair of the Amherst Planning Board. I'm calling this meeting to order at six thirty two P M. This meeting is being recorded and is available via Amherst Media livestream. Minutes are being taken pursuant to Chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty one. This planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may do so by following the link shown on the slide. This link is also available on the meeting agenda posted on the town's website's calendar listing for this meeting. Or go to the planning board webpage and click on the most recent agenda, which lists the Zoom link at the top of the page. No one in person attendance of the public will be permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship and despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of Amherst website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. For members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name and mute yourself, answer firmly and then place yourselves back on mute. Maria Chow.
President.
Tom Long. Andrew McDougall.
Present.
Doug Marshall.
Present.
Janet McGowan.
Here.
Johanna Newman.
Present, and I'll be on video shortly.
Great. And then myself as well. So Jack Johnson. So Board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to pause temporarily to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. Discussion may be suspended while the issues are addressed. The minutes will note if this happens. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment. I will see your raised hand and call you on, call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. Opportunity for public comment will be provided during the general public comment period and is reserved for comments regarding items that are not on tonight's agenda. Public comment may also be heard at other appropriate times during the meeting. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during the general public comment period. Please indicate if you wish to make a comment during the public comment period by clicking the raise hand button. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your telephone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address. Put yourself back into mute and finish speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes and at the discretion of the planning board chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation will be disconnected from the meeting. So as we begin, our first item is minutes and we don't have any to review today, and we can open it up to public comment. And I'm just looking at that screen now. Yes.
Jack, I want to tell you, I had you, I had a problem with the timer today. And I accidentally deleted it out of my computer. And so we don't have the three minute timer.
Oh, yeah, that was a nice addition.
I know. I'll get it back. I mean, I had reached out, but I haven't made a good connection yet.
Okay, I'll try to keep an eye on it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And so are there any in one of the public that want to utilize the public comment period? All right, I see no hands, so we can jump into the agenda. And we are going to bring up old business as a first item as a matter of convenience. And that would be SPR twenty twenty dash oh five four sixty two Main LLC, John Robleski, four sixty two Main Street, and he requests approval of minimal but not substantial changes to the site plan under condition number eight of the decision for the site plan review SPR twenty twenty oh five. So I believe we would have a presentation by
John is here and Christine Royal, his consultant is also here, and I think they've both been moved into being panelists. Oh, Christine, yeah, Christine is going to make the presentation. I see her hand raised.
Okay, I didn't know that she was with them, so I'm moving. I just moved her. Sorry, sorry, Christine. My apologies.
So hello, John. You, and then Christine, we see you.
Good evening.
And you're unmuted. Great. Are you going to lead the presentation, Christine?
I will share screen as needed, but I think John might have some things he'd like to start with.
Okay. Hi, John.
How are you?
We hear you.
Okay. So the project has taken a couple of turns. So right now, our goal is to get a CEO because we have tenants moving in in about two weeks. So we're just trying to deal with the trash and recycling area and get that approved. Ideally, what we're asking for tonight that was presented is to, instead of read, you know, tearing down and rebuilding the back fourteen by fourteen foot area of the existing building and rebuild that as we had approval for on the original plans. One of two things, I mean, right now we're asking for if we can maintain that area for the interim anyway, until we get permission probably on August eighteenth from the board to completely remove the building as an alternate, as an amendment to the site plan. And also to change the rear door there, which is currently about thirty two inches wide. But the three foot wide door in there, so trash cans could go in and out and bicycles and so forth. And use that area back there. That's about the same size as the proposed rebuild. So we figure it's there. Eventually, we're going to have a temporary shed request there. The ideal situation is if the board would consider tonight to allow us to remove that fourteen by fourteen foot area and place the shed there now. Nothing's really going to change. That would still give us space to remove the rest of the building. And it would end up in the same place in about a month from now anyway. But if the board's not, you know, tuned to considering that, then what you had before you here is what we are presenting. So basically, it's, you can see the approved edition on the back there. We were going to enlarge it a little bit to the east and move the door. Right now, we're moving the door around to the north side where the existing door to get into that portion of the building is now. Another consideration, this plan shows that we put a roof over there because we thought it'd be a little more the same as what was approved on the original plan. We look at it now, the contractor says, well, why would you bother putting a roof over that small area just to cover a couple of bicycles or something in the interim and have that whole thing disappear in a month or six weeks or whatever? So I guess if we can put that door in and have that accessible, I mean, a ramp going up to it and so forth, to the finished floor is going to be about the same as what's on the grading plan that has been approved. So a couple of things, if you would consider not putting a roof over that back area there, because we have to build that actually and extend it and put in some posts, that would disappear potentially in, you know, five or six weeks. Or to allow us to completely remove that back fourteen by fourteen foot area and place the shed there before tenants move in the middle of August and have it there once we're done on the rest of the building. So that's pretty much in a nutshell, other than some more items regarding some landscaping changes and stuff. And originally, we are hoping to save. There is three Hinoki Cypress plants to the right of the driveway when you drove into the parking area before we did anything. We tried to dig those out and transplant them and the landscapers said, you know what? Just the root structure just isn't there and they're not going to survive. So he actually took them to his house and one survived. So that's a change as far as what's in the front of the transformer. Other than that, if we can just put some rubber body there that we can keep trimmed to a height, not high enough to screen the transformer and then put in the inkberry bushes as is on the landscaping plan that's been approved to screen the front three parking spaces there. That's pretty much as far as landscaping, other than the narrow area that's between the sidewalk and the building itself. So in the north section of the parking area, right in front of the building on a west side. My wife is concerned about putting some of those bushes in there that would end up growing too big. So she's talked with the landscaper, if we can get permission just to substitute something of similar size, that's not going to grow as big, that will stay more compact because there's windows right there for some of the dwelling units. And it's only a matter of about three and a half to four feet planting area between the sidewalk and the building. Electrical vehicle charging ports initially, they were shown on a plan to be in front of the transformer and end up being a kind of a cramped area there. And every source suggested putting on the other side of the parking lot just directly across from there. So that's where they ended up. And on the original plans, I don't think we showed the solar panels on the west side of the building. So there's going to be ninety five solar panels, the majority of which will be on the east roof line. But we do want some facing on a west, so to get, take advantage of that late day sun. So you will see some solar panels, and I think it's, you know, good, good for everybody to see that also. So it'll be about, I think, twenty eight or thirty panels facing west.
So John, I see that Chris has her hand up, and then I feel like we need some plans to point out some of these changes that you're referring to, just so we can get a better perspective.
Christine, do you have that?
I do have it up. I am sharing my screen.
Sorry, Chris Brester, I'm sorry, Chris Brester has her hand up. So and then, and then you guys.
I wanted to give the big picture here. John is asking for approval for very small things right now tonight. Essentially, he's asking for approval to not build the new shed on the back of the house and instead use the old shed to store trash and bicycles and mail, I believe. And he was suggesting that he would put a roof over the area where the bicycles would be and that he was going to put in a new door. So that's really all he's asking for tonight. Meanwhile, he has run into trouble with the house. And he's been before the historical commission and they've given him permission to take down the house. But he needs to go through a site plan review application process to take down the house. And then he has some other changes that he wants to make, like moving the electrical charging stations and changes in planting and other things. So right now, tonight, all he's asking for is what's in this image here. He wants to do the image on the right where it says proposed addition. There's a floor plan for that and there's an image of it instead of the approved addition. And this is because in the long run, which is probably going to be sometime in the next few months, he wants to take down the house and put in a storage shed for bicycles and trash. And this would be a temporary storage shed because he's just purchased the property next door at four forty six Main Street. So he wants to figure out, you know, a connection to the property next door and what he should do with the property next door. And so there are some long term plans that need to be laid. But he, he wants to make the property livable and, you know, nice and neat for the tenants of the new building. But he has run into trouble with this existing house and he's got to take it down. But as I said, that's an application that has just been submitted and it's going to be advertised next week. And there's a public hearing for it on the eighteenth of August. But tonight, you're just being asked to approve this change in the back shed from a new shed to alterations on the old shed, which include adding the covering and changing the door. And now Mr. Robleski has said tonight that he would prefer not to add the covering. So it sounds like he's just wanting to put in a new door and leave everything as it is. That's my understanding of the situation. So, so it's pretty simple for tonight. But it's going to get more complicated next on the eighteen.
Well, I guess eighteen. Okay. So, John, you mentioned tearing down that portion of the building. But is that even in the cards?
Well, it's possible, you know, construction wise, it's, it was attached to the mainframe in the building years ago and it's not on a foundation. So the foundation of the rest of the building is entirely separate. If you remember, there is no foundation under this back section and just on bricks and stones. So it's easy enough to disconnect that, you know, just cut it off from the existing building. Basically, the three walls and the main wall that attaches to the house would still be there. It just saving time and redoing things type thing. That's the only reason I ask.
Yeah, so Chris, can you speak to that, Chris?
Yeah, so what Mr. Robleski wants to do is take down the shed and put in, take down the back area and put in a shed. But you haven't seen pictures of the shed yet. It is coming on August eighteenth, and I think you should really wait until August eighteenth when you've got the whole proposal before you for that. And we have four other we fit this in, you know, thinking that it would take fifteen or twenty minutes. If we get too complicated about it, it's going to be
Yes. So John, we have a, we do have a full night. So maybe if we can just focus on exactly what you need to do at a minimum.
That's fine. I understand. Yep.
Okay.
Includes adding the shed roof, maybe, maybe not. And, and putting in the new door in this existing shed and then just using it. And the plan for that is shown in the lower right hand corner of the drawing that Christine Royal is showing.
Yeah, so let me just walk through this very quickly. This is the existing condition now. And this is the existing back shed area that we're talking about. And although there's a trailer in this photo, you can see here is the door. And we'd really like to keep the door as we're showing in this new proposed addition in the same location. So we're proposing minimal to no change to this back addition, aside from the fact that the door needs to be wider for accessibility. So this center column was what was originally approved way back. And you can see that we're really trying to do de minimis change so that this can be approved and move forward. And as John noted, you know, everything will get a little more complicated at the next meeting. But it's really keeping the existing building as is widening the door and improving access to the back. John did mention, and it's true that this roof shed over the bikes is not obviously not existing. And if we don't need it to really comply with the de minimis change, we'd like to not add it. It's just, it's just added cost that will be removed in six weeks or so time after our next meeting.
Thank you. So I think, are you, you pretty much have all set? Because I know you come back August eighteenth, you're going to have a lot more detail. But now we're just focused on the shed. So if you're done with your presentation, I can solicit the planning board comments.
Yep, all set. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So Doug and then Andrew.
Yeah, I wondered whether we can approve this for a particular short duration on the condition that the applicant return within a reasonable period of time with the, the rest of the picture. Because, you know, if we can give him, you know, sort of a temporary approval and that, that would simplify things in my mind. Maybe Chris can tell us that.
Yeah, Chris.
So this kind of thing doesn't usually allow conditioning because it's not a real application. And Mr. Robleski has submitted his application to do this more complicated version. He submitted the fee and the application form and all the drawings that go along with it. So I think he's really serious about pursuing this. So I think it's probably not necessary to try to condition this, especially because you can't really condition this type of thing. And, oh, by the way, Rob Mora is here in the wings if things get really complicated.
Good to know. Andrew and then Janet.
I'm ready to make a motion, but if Janet's got some questions, I'd let her ask her questions first.
Yeah, I mean, you can make a motion and then we can have discussion afterward. It doesn't.
Fair enough. So I'll make a motion that we approve this with, without the shed extension that that is being proposed.
For the roof. Okay.
Yep.
Any second to that?
Second.
Okay, Doug. Okay, so now we have additional discussion. We have Janet.
Um, I thought I understood what was going on until you said there's going to be more drawings later on the eighteenth. So on the eighteenth, there's going to be and we're going to look at the proposal to demolish the building and build a new one. Like, what drawings could there be? Like, I don't really understand where we are, like, in the process in terms of applications and things, then.
Chris Brester has her hand up.
So Mr. Robleski has this new building and he needs to get tenants into it in the middle of August, August fifteenth, I think. So he's taking a very stopgap, short path tonight and hoping to get approval from you to do minimum changes to that back area. And then he has filed a new application to change, to amend the previous site plan review application decision. And he's going to take down, he hopes to be able to take down the existing house. And he's going to add a very small shed. It's only, I think, twelve by sixteen. It's like the kind of shed that you see, you know, in gardening stores. And it's not going to have a foundation and that's going to be a temporary measure. And he will come back sometime in the future, future with a more detailed plan. And that future, future probably won't happen for six months or six to nine months or maybe even a year. But tonight, he's just asking to make those small changes to that shed that already exists. On the eighteenth, he's going to come with a full application to take down the house, put up a new small shed and do those other things that he talked about, change the location of the E V charging stations, make the changes to the planting. I think he's going to add a small, one small parking space that would accommodate an Uber or a Lyft. He's calling it shared parking. And there may be some other small things. But anyway, that's coming to you as a full blown site plan review application on the eighteenth. But tonight, he's just asking for that small change to the back so that he can leave the house in place because he doesn't have approval from you to take down the house yet. And we know that that's going to be a complicated conversation and people are going to want to weigh in on it, the public will. So we think that that's best handled at a public hearing that's devoted to that particular topic. And tonight, we're just asking for the one small change.
So Chris, we're just to ignore what was in our packet with regard to the, the demo and the house information, which seemed very informative, by the way, with his, with the structural engineer, but we'll just ignore that.
Ignore, it gives you context for doing this small stopgap measure.
Okay.
He has this other larger hurdle to overcome, which is to get permission from you all to take down the house. He doesn't have that permission yet. So I thought I would send that information along so you could have that as a background. But he's not proposing to do that tonight. He's just proposing to change the door on the shed.
All right. Any other further discussion amongst the board? I see none. Let's open it up to the, to the public. Any public comment on this? I don't see any. Okay, so we can do a roll call. And Maria.
Approve.
And Andrew.
Hi.
Doug.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Janet.
Hi.
Johanna.
Hi.
And I will be an I as well. So it's seven zero. So thanks, John. Thank you, Christine. All right, so with that, we can get back into our public hearing. And so yeah, we have we have what?
I'm doing some clicking over here. We have, we have to bring people in, right? Kyle and
Right, right.
So I was just making sure.
While you're doing that, I'll just go through all these things. So we're going to open up the hearing again for again, it's a combination site plan review and special permits, but S P P twenty twenty one dash zero three Archipelago Investments. And all of these will be Archipelago Investments LLC. So this first one is eleven eleven, eleven thirteen East Pleasant Street for non-conforming building to be structurally altered, enlarged or reconstructed under section nine point two two of the zoning bylaw for mixed use building proposed under section three point three two five of the zoning bylaw. Then the, the next one is SPR twenty twenty one zero seven and S P P twenty twenty one dash zero two. And this is the hearing to request a site plan review. Again, it's a continuation approved for construction of a mixed use building containing dwelling units in combination with ground floor retail commercial, including approximately thirteen hundred square feet of retail space. I'm not sure that's right, but lobby.
Jack, may I interrupt just to comment?
Yes, yeah.
So Archipelago came in earlier this year and applied for a building that conformed to the, what you're describing right now.
Yes.
Not withdrawn that application yet. They may ask to withdraw it tonight, but we don't know that. So we're leaving it on the agenda because the public hearing for that hasn't been closed and the planning board hasn't made any decisions about that. But that was for the building that was fifty five units and thirteen hundred square feet of retail and it also
Okay, the initial proposal. Okay, it's, yeah, it can be confusing. Okay, so that has thirteen hundred square feet of retail space, lobby, leasing, fitness, trash area, mechanical space, elevator, parking and fifty five apartments under section three point three two five of the zoning bylaw. And to request a special permit to modify dimensional requirements for height side and reset back into footnote A of table three, section six of the zoning bylaw. So and then the next one is SPR twenty twenty one dash zero nine. And again, this is continuation. Again, we met May fifth, June second and June thirtieth on this. So this is a request of site plan review approval under section five point zero zero of the zoning bylaw for an accessory and incidentally used to permitted principal use on an adjacent lot for construction staging and management of the eleven East Pleasant Street project post construction. Site will be stabilized with asphalt service and fence. And the last one is SPR twenty twenty one dash twelve at eleven and thirteen East Pleasant Street, public hearing for the, this continuation from June thirtieth only. The public hearing for a site plan review application for construction of a mixed use billing containing dwelling units in combination with ground floor retail commercial, including twenty two hundred square feet of retail space, lobby, leasing, fitness, trash area, mechanical space, elevator and ninety apartments, including eleven portable units under section three point three two five leasing, fitness, trash area, mechanical space, elevator, and 90 apartments, including 11 portable units under section 3.325 of the zoning bylaw. So that's all that kind of bundled together. So we can ask the project proponents to have their presentation. And we have Kyle, Dave, looks like Mark Bobrowski. How you doing, Kyle? Hello, Dave. Okay, so Kyle, just I'll just hand it over to you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. We, since we last saw you, we have met on site and we've been for the DRB. I believe you have in the packet everything we've shown the DRB. I think we wanted to keep our presentation pretty short tonight and and basically do what we can to respond to questions. I believe that Chris and Pam have all everything we've submitted. Do you want me to? What's the best way for me to to do this? Should I share a screen or?
What what I have available is what was in the packet.
I'll share the screen and I'll show you what we've submitted and I'll go through that. And that's the best way. Let me get you guys on here. I'm coming. Sorry, guys.
No problem.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
So I'll start with the architectural. Try not to rename it. This is in your packet. So this is updated and presented to the designer view board. The intent of this was to show the improvements to the streetscape and the town right of way. So you'll see that on the site plan here. The three trees out front, the crosswalk, the benches, the bollards, the bike loops, the tree grates, and the tree guards. You will see the ground floor plan, which I'll try to remove this, shows the entirety of the ground floor, which has not changed since we last submitted. And then the upper four plans remain as they are. The rendered elevations that show the street-facing facade has remained the same. The north side has remained. The east side facing West Cemetery and the south side facing One East Pleasant have remained. And we've updated the rendering. So this rendering shows the proposed improvements in the town right of way from the property line to the curb. The curb lines remain the same to accommodate for the bus on the north end to accommodate for the new crosswalk that would cross Pleasant Street there. There are three trees that are planted in there as per conversations with Alan Snow. Those are trees, species of his choosing that we would install. There's pavers that come across the street, across from the site, across the sidewalk to the right of way. The bench that Pacifica bench that we installed at One East Pleasant is proposed here and the tree grates, the tree guards and the granite bollards. All of those are from the town standards that are used elsewhere in town. Additional rendering show some of that in context, show the tree in front. These are very similar and we did show and discuss the, you know, the corrugated metal roof screen, you know, for that materiality for the roof screen above. The landscape, revised landscape also shows those streetscape improvements. So this L1 plan remains similar to all we've previously shown, all planted, pulled back from the cemetery with the trees running across. And then the streetscape improvements are L 2.0, which is again showing those same improvements, noting that all calling out the granite bollard, calling out the pavers, the bench, the bike loops, the tree grate, we're proposing round rather than square to accommodate the geometries and the tree guards. Also, the the bike loops. We have shown three. We also have the photometric plan that is, you know, basically showing the photo met, you know, our lighting has been has been centered around egress and getting in on the site. Everything's downcast, everything is shielded. We have projects north of this and south of this, and the lighting approach is very, is effectively identical. We have three renderings. The first is from the north of the bike share. So that is from coming south on Pleasant Street. You can see spoke in the foreground, People's Bank in the foreground, and One East Pleasant to the south and the bike share and the streetscape improvements in the new sidewalk on Kendrick Park, the streetlights. And you can see the ground floor. You can see the the gash, as we've called it here on the north side. And you can see it relative to One East Pleasant. You can also look at another rendering here, which is the dentist parking lot, as I've called it. So I stepped back, we looked at some potential renderings further east as you're coming from the high school, heading towards the roundabout. And obviously, there's a bunch of trees along there to prevent a streetscape view from working out well. But stepping back here, we were able to show the a bit of the facade here, that that stretch that runs out to Pleasant Street. And then there's, there's two trees that are existing here. Three trees that are going to remain here on the north of 11 East Pleasant property. And there's actually two trees that are going to remain here. We wanted to kind of stem that a little bit so you could see the the edge of that facade. And I'll show you those two trees in subsequent rendering, which is here from West Cemetery, which was requested, and we just submitted today. So the two trees that we just had a site visit yesterday morning at 9:00 AM. At that site visit, we walked around to the cemetery side. We looked at the two trees that are on the town side, those on the town side of the fence, which will remain. These two trees and another to the north are north of the property. They'll remain. And these are our proposed plantings in between the building and the property line represented here by the fence. And I think that that is it. Civil. I don't think, I think is repeating everything that we've discussed previously. So I think with that, we would, we would open it up to questions.
Okay. What you you do, you want to do the right of way a little bit?
Sure.
We
Yep, I'll go through that a little bit more. I think that that's, I will try to stop flipping this so much. But so the right of way improvements are listed here. Again, the 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 location of the curb doesn't change, accommodates the bus. We obviously close off the existing curb cut that serves the parking lot that we're redeveloping. The the Janus papers that we're using on the the private property would come over the the walkway that's six feet, the paved concrete sidewalk per town standards at six feet. There'd be pavers on the street side of that. There's two Pacifica benches shown. There's three tree grates and trees and tree guards. And then there is a bike loop here, a bike loop here, and a bike loop here. There's also a bollard shown facing the street. All of these, as we've said in previous meetings, we realize need to go through multiple layers of approval. We are willing to pay for these improvements. We wanted to show what we thought was the best solution to those improvements. And we understand that, you know, subsequent boards may have to tweak things, change things, or or push. But we wanted to show you what we are proposing. That's shown here in the rendering, gives a little more dimension to it. So again, you can see that the curb line remains in the same location. We close off the curb cut to the parking that's here. That becomes the crosswalk, three trees, the benches and the bollards.
Thank you, Kyle. Tom, would you mind going over the DRB findings?
Sure, Jack. Give me one second on your file. So I guess to summarize, I think the DRB was had unanimously unanimously voted to approve the project. There was a lengthy debate. There was a lot of public comment. And I think there were, there large collection of very positive comments, especially feedback about the improvements to the streetscape, which you see in this rendering here, which came up many times. But the motion that was approved was basically to allow the project to go forward with a set of what we call recommendations or suggestions. And essentially, the the key elements that we that were up for discussion, the top of the list really focused on the rear setback from, there were many people on the board or a few people on the board, which is not that many people, a few people on the board that were really concerned about the rear setback. So that would be the the east facade, am I correct? And again, from a visual perspective, from the the cemetery, people really wanted to see that setback increased to the full 20, if possible. But again, approved as is, again, just expressing their concerns about that rear facade. And we do understand that there will be a discussion about which side will have the trees, who will plant the trees, and exactly what that tree configuration will be at a later date. So Kyle might be able to verify that after the fact. And I think from there, there were some comments about, as you can see in the packet, window shades came up, making sure that those are clean. There's lots of windows here. So there will be a figure in the foreground of the building from a design perspective, making sure that those are rigid and not curtains. So some form of shades were preferred. There was concern about the rendering showing the trees in front, as Kyle mentioned. Those will be managed or decided upon with consultation from the tree warden. But we felt like trees with more of a canopy here would be better than the ones that are shown in this particular rendering. So again, we'll let them make that decision. There was a little bit of concern about maintenance, so making sure that things like the boulder in the courtyard and the material, the wood material stays maintained for appearances. And we know that Kyle has experience with this from other projects. But that was a concern that would would degrade over time. And I think even Doug raised that some time ago. And we addressed that there. And then I think the, you know, the last issue that keeps coming up is is really trying to think about that that north facade that people did feel like it is beautiful, yet an expansive surface that they would like to see broken up in some other way, whether materially or spatially, if possible. But again, these are suggestions. We do hope that Kyle would take those into consideration. And the last thing was the photometric plan, which we just never saw, and we saw that in this reviews. But um, but that's the sort of the overarching issues that we were debating, but it was, there was quite a bit of feedback from the public, much of which will probably hear again tonight. So both some in favor, but mostly, you know, with similar concerns, so.
Okay, before we open it up to the board, Chris, do you want to speak to any of this new information? The photogrammic, say that right? Plan, the light levels, they look good, but and then any other comments you have based on the new information that that we just, you know, gotten in the last couple of days?
I would say that the design of the of the right of way is, you know, flexible, although I think what is being shown here is, you know, represents the different components that the applicant is agreeable to providing. So those components could be moved around based on meetings with the town council or whoever else has to approve this, including the planning board. The planning board can make on it. And I don't know if it's been brought to the DPW yet. I think it probably hasn't. So one thing that the staff thought was that by providing this improved right of way here, that it tended to create a larger area in the front of the building. You know, that it added to the triangular space that's immediately in front of the building and made that a more usable space. Let's see what else. In terms of the photometric plan, I took a quick look at it. What they're doing is lighting the walkways that lead alongside their building. There's not a lot of light underneath that overhanging area as far as I can tell. But the the walkways are what they're focusing on lighting so that they get their people back from the street scape back to the entryway into the building. And there's an entry on the north side and the south side. I don't think I have any other comments right now. Certainly, I'll have comments. Get into the conditions and findings if you get that far.
Yes, yeah. I just wanted to check in with you. So planning board members looking for hands. Okay, so we have Janet and then Doug. Janet?
I just wanted to supplement Tom's comments that one of the recommendations was to consider for the design review board was to consider expanding the size of the proposed onsite outdoor plaza in front of the building facing East Pleasant Street. And so I know, so that's clear. And then some, some of the members were commenting that the small side plaza, which has the granite boulder or just a boulder, was too small. And so there was some talk, someone, some members mentioned combining that space or just making it bigger for everyone to share. I hope I'm not talking out of turn, but I did see that recommendation number seven.
The granite boulder item, can we get a graphic on that? Okay. Thank you. Janet, anything else?
I have other things, but I just wanted to add that while we were talking.
All right, Doug, please.
Okay, yeah, I had several questions. And I guess I'll just sort of throw them all out and see how many people can answer. First of all, I wondered whether you, Jack or Chris, could help us structure this conversation? You know, we have, it looks like we have two special permits and two site plan reviews to work our way through here. And I'm wondering whether we could sort of deal with the issues in the first site plan review and then deal with the issues in the second site plan review. All for whichever of these submittals Archipelago wants us to consider first, since we have two different buildings that have been submitted. I would be more comfortable if we just sort of structured it in a way that that I was clear about exactly what we were talking about while we did it. So that's my first request.
Chris has her hand up. Let's see.
So you have two site plan reviews and two special permits to deal with. There's also the sort of this digital site plan review application. And this may be an appropriate time to ask the applicant, what his thoughts are about that application and whether he might choose to withdraw it or what his intention is with regard to that. My impression is that the applicant is not focused on that application at this time and that he's putting his energy into what you're seeing on your screen here. And so my advice would be not to spend a lot of time on that previous site plan review application, particularly since it doesn't meet the inclusionary zoning requirements.
And and I would say I would agree that with that with Chris. The intent is to proceed with this, the site plan review that we have before you and the previously submitted we've held to be withdrawn subsequent to that.
Okay.
Okay, great. Then so for this particular design, I guess I'm I guess I'm wondering, the more I look at this and the more I think about it, I'm I'm wondering a little bit more about whether I actually would, whether it would be smart on our part to ask for some sort of setback on the west end, on the street frontage end. You know, I'm I'm less concerned about whether the people in the cemetery are seeing the building 10 feet closer. And I guess I'm just, I'm just thinking we might, particularly if that retail space could potentially ever be a restaurant or something that, you know, how everybody spilled out onto the sidewalk during the pandemic. You know, so so anyway, I'm wondering whether we might, it might be smart for us to set maybe a setback of, say, 10 feet from the property line as the setback for the entire building. And then I'm also interested to know from the applicant what the overall width of the building is on its narrow dimension and what the impact would be of requiring the north side to meet the bylaw of 10 feet setback rather than the five feet that's been proposed. So I I'm interested in a in responses from my committee members or my board colleagues to the to the question about whether a setback on the street side would be supported. And I'm interested in hearing from Kyle on the north side impacts. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Kyle, do you have any?
Yeah, I would, I'd say relative to the the side yard setback, we need to be clear that the bylaw states that no set side yard setback is required. If required, it's 10 feet, right? So the reason for that is so you have access. We have an easement to the north of this property. Right? So the building is 60 feet wide. And that allows you to have a double loaded corridor and efficiently provide the housing units that we desperately need. Relative to reducing, so reducing the square footage of the building in that dimension, obviously, we don't think is called for with an easement to the north of of the building. I think reducing the square footage over all five floors of the building relative to the street produces number of units, reduces number of affordable units. And again, our bylaw allows for and calls for zero outlines on the street, which is the historic norm of every building facing the town common.
Thank you, Kyle. Maria?
Thanks for the presentation and to sort of answer Doug's question about the what about the west setback. I actually think, you know, we've come across this before where we need to really consider the location of the street curb and not necessarily property line because the sidewalk sort of wiggles and as it goes from parcel to parcel. And I think with this right of way improvement, there's actually quite a bit of pedestrian public space now, and I'm I'm pretty comfortable with that. I that's what the last meeting I was hoping to see was was presented tonight. It's literally just, you know, how much of the right of way can you give back to both the people using the building and the people walking past? And this provides plenty of breathing rooms. If you look at the S V E site plan, you know, varies from 20 feet to almost 40 as we go wider. So I'm comfortable with the west where it is. As far as the north, we just don't know what's going to happen on that adjacent parcel. And it it really seems like this could set a precedent to lead to more, you know, density downtown. So I'm not too concerned with the five because I feel, you know, the next project or whatever, whoever comes by, we'll take that into account and, you know, we'll either put their building or, you know, place accordingly as far as access and light and making it look appropriate for the creating this continuity that I think this project does actually with the project to itself. As far as just to touch on, you didn't really ask about this, but just to touch on the cemetery side, I agree. I don't think that you know, what's what's there now is really an eyesore. And so I think this is a great improvement to the east side of the parcel and I agree, I'm not too concerned about getting further away from that fence. I think the loss of housing units would be more of a detriment to this project than that sort of space that would be created that's not really usable and is not really as much of the sort of, you know, downtown defining kind of edge that we're trying to make really great on the west. I guess my only questions. Yeah, the lighting looks fine. I appreciate the lighting plan. That was sort of a missing piece from last time. And I guess this right of way thing, I don't, I maybe it's a question of course, do we need to comment on it tonight? Or can we just assume we'll be brought back a new, more detailed plan? I'm not clear on the process for that piece, but I really do appreciate having this sort of conceptual design for it. And I'm all for it. I think that's great. It really adds so much to the project. So that's it for now.
Maria, I have a question for you. What are your thoughts on the on the the north facade? And with the DRB? Thoughts on on breaking it up?
Right. Again, it's a similar thing with, you know, we don't know what's going to happen on the adjacent parcel. So it's, you know, whether it creates a sort of urban space there or if it busts up against it, we just, it's hard to guess that. But for now, looking at it from a distance, it it feels like it's broken up enough and has enough angles that they've done a nice job of breaking up that long facade. It's a tough conundrum for a lot of architects to break up, you know, we saw that at University Drive with the long was it north and south facade? And you really have to be creative to do that. And I think they've done a nice job with the fenestration as far as breaking out. And I think that DRB suggestion of the controlled blinds coming down will really help as well because it'll have this more sort of systematic way of breaking up the facade, you know, instead of just curtains going, you know, whichever width they want. This will really help that facade look really tidy and very sort of, yeah, a little more niche. So I I'd never, I mean, elevations, again, I think I mentioned, are very abstract. You never see it on the flat like that, and it makes it look really long. In fact, that west facade is angling away from, you know, it's kind of an abstraction. So it actually won't look that long the way that north elevation is portrayed. So I think the 3D perspective show it really well. And yeah, I don't have an issue with that north side.
Okay. Thank you. So we have Janet and then, oh, Chris, I'm sorry, I put you front. And then we have Janet and Andrew.
I was just going to answer Maria's question about what the planning board's role is with the right of way. So the planning board doesn't necessarily have a formal role with the design of the right of way because it's on the town property, but the planning board could include a condition that asks to see the design of this right of way area as it evolves and then have have an opportunity to comment on it. So we could can condition it that way if you would like.
You know, Chris, just thinking off the cuff here, it'd be really nice if they could kind of combine this right of way work with, you know, bumping out the one East Pleasant pinch point there a little bit. Just put that in the hopper, but maybe it could be one one project. So not that I'm volunteering Kyle to pay for for that, but all right, thank you. So Janet and then Andrew.
So I would like to support what Doug has been saying. And one of the things I I was hoping to see and I, you know, we could see is a picture of somebody standing at the make it the thing, the northwest corner. If you're walking, if a pedestrian is coming up the street kind of at the corner, what is, what do they see? You know, looking straight ahead, looking at the building, you know, different perspectives on that. Because I think that what a lot of people have commented on, architects and laypeople, is that sense of, you know, a really looming building right up on the street. And I do appreciate the adding of the public way. I think it gets, it really does make it feel more open. But I just don't think it's it's going to be enough to prevent anyone standing there coming up, feeling like this building really is pushing onto the street. And I think that, you know, I'd be, I think the side plaza doesn't seem to me like a workable space. And if there was more space out front, if the building was set back by 10 feet, it could be more communal space. There could be room for tables, there could be room for, you know, seating that faces each other. You know, and I would actually recommend instead of just the trees, which of course I love trees, is to add some some planting, some flowers. Think about like the henion block and how inviting that is with kind of a mix of flowers and shrubs and trees. And you see people gathering there all the time. And I think that would be a huge add to this area of town that really lacks any kind of public communal space. And maybe shrinking the plaza and, you know, the side plaza and bringing it out front. I do think that this the setback, the 10 foot setback, which is a requirement, but does have A on it on the north side should be 10 feet. I I think on one East Pleasant, when you look where the bollards are, that is a really narrow place for pedestrians to be walking along. And I think about carrying bags or pushing a stroller or two people trying to pass each other in different directions. And it's really, I think about snow and, you know, an umbrella, people just, it just seems way too narrow for people. And so I think on the west side, if there was a 10 foot setback, there'd be space for people to pass each other safely and in not in a kind of like we're getting by each other like rodents. And also there's space for trees. And and, you know, what one of the requirements is that when you have a residential building adjoining commercial space, that there be a buffer of vegetation. And that's really missing here. And then 11 East Pleasant seems to be providing that vegetative buffer for one East Pleasant. And one East Pleasant also has a vegetative buffer on the other side. And so it sort of softens, I think it will soften the facade. And I completely agree. I feel like I'm in this huge run on paragraph, but I do think the west perspective is just, it to me, it's just huge. I mean, I think it just feels like a big blocky mass. I have like an ocean liner feeling and I don't, I think there's been some attempt to tweak it, but I think for us laypeople, it just looks like a big box. And, you know, could you change the color of the first two floors to be the darker brick? Could you change the plane? You know, the the design review board, some people suggested a step back for the first, the front facade and the rear facade. Is there some way to make it look less like one big box? And so, so I would, I would support what Doug is saying as to the front setback and the side setback.
Thank you, Janet. Andrew?
Thanks, Jack. Thanks for the presentation, Kyle. I let's see, got a couple sort of thoughts here. So one I've just, I wasn't at the last meeting, so just, I appreciate sort of you responding to some of our earlier comments about the affordable housing and the added retail space. So so thanks for doing that. I think the building is beautiful. I think that you know, it's, it's, I like going after Doug and Janet because they often give me some some additional thoughts. I think the west, the right way, like I don't have any concerns that. I think actually the glass will help make it feel much more open and airy than one East Pleasant, which to me is really like the large brick up on the sidewalk that you have to like avoid. I think this actually might be, might be kind of inviting. I know we've said in the past, like that we shouldn't consider Kendrick Park across the street really in the same conversation as this, but I imagine that will be a lot of people who, when they want that green space, it's like literally across a crosswalk that that's being added there. So I think that you could see some spill over there. I suspect you'll see a fair amount, given the number of of housing units that are here. I thought the view sort of from the north and you had another rendering that's kind of was from the west. It actually seeing those renders actually made me feel more comfortable about this, that it like it literally closes a loop of one East Pleasant, right? But it didn't, it didn't have the overbearing appearance, which I was kind of worried about. And I think like you would, you would often think that that's going to happen when you're putting a five story building here. So I I was, I was good with that. I think, you know, Janet, I haven't processed and Doug, your your comments around the north, getting some vegetation there and having a vegetative buffer. I think that there, I think that the building facade is 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 is, you know, sort of pleasant and dynamic that it maybe could account for the fact that there isn't our trees planted in there. But it would be really nice if we could get some sort of even some something green there, maybe some ivy or something to that effect, just to get get the vegetation without maybe requiring eating or without putting a larger burden on setback because I understand you're you're juggling a pretty big math equation here to to make all of the units fit to accommodate the affordable, to accommodate the retail and fitted within the footprint. I was curious, I think there's some emails that went on this, so apologize if I missed it, but on the eastern building facade, were there plans to put a mural or commission some artwork similar to what what's at one East Pleasant? Kyle?
I don't think so.
No, there's no plan for.
Okay, okay. I mean, I I
The grade significantly higher.
Okay, I did not join the site plan yesterday, so apologize for that. I did go by today and I haven't been in the cemetery very much at all. I thought that the mural was really nice, but yeah, it it looks like a dumpster fire back there. So I agree. I think right now that Maria said it well in terms of anything's really an improvement. I think it will will make it look much better there and and yeah, so the 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 folks who reside in the cemetery will have a pleasant, more pleasant view. Overall, yeah, I I would say one, one question and a half. I know that like I know that we're in the municipal parking district, but I was just curious, like, where do you think, I know you don't need to accommodate this, but I'm curious, where do you think people will park? And then and add on to that, which is be and we may get to this later. Apologize if I'm getting ahead of turn is is the staging area and the the pub building is, is, do you have a a future plan in mind for those spaces as well? And and is that something that could potentially in the future become be become parking for these residents?
Yeah, I know. I I posed that question as well.
Okay, yeah, apologies if I if I repeat.
Yeah, yeah. So Kyle, why don't you repeat your answer on that?
Sure. So the intent is not to have parking on the spot where the pub is. A private parking lot is is not allowed in the bylaw, as I understand it, as it would be there. And that's not our intent. I think that the people that live in this building will have, you know, options for parking or not having a car. And when you are attempting to do so much in such, you know, less than one half of 1% of the total landmass of the town of Amherst in terms of all of the, you know, future housing pressure getting pushed there because of our bylaw that we have a whole bunch of things coming together. And parking is the thing that is in is secondary to housing. I think our housing crisis is such that we really need the units. I think that you're seeing that play out around the country in areas where there's a high barrier to entry and there hasn't been enough sufficient housing to meet demand that 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 those those conversations are being had. Obviously, there's the downtown parking permit, which we've all discussed many times and the relatively very low cost of that. And then there's I imagine there's other options for folks who are here in terms of having a car, not having a car, using ride share and so on. Relative to the north setback, I just want to restate that the bylaw allows for zero zero foot, no setback side yards in the entire BG. And the intent of that is to replicate what is around the town common, where there are buildings cheek to jowl next to each other, 0000. It reflects a desire for density. It reflects the understanding of what a downtown BG district is, which is dense and and pedestrian. It also, if you do zero setbacks, you're obviously not doing parking on the site because you have no location for a curb cut unless you're bringing it in through the front of the building. So in this case, we have an easement to the north. There's a 17 foot wide easement that serves the bank next door that is another property owner that is immediately north of this building. So yes, we have a five foot setback, but that five foot setback to the north, that is a 17 foot easement, which remains open for access and and egress.
Thank you, Tom, please. And then Janet?
Sure, I just had a quick comment that kind of piggybacked on a lot of people's comments and a little bit of the DRB. I'm hearing Janet and Doug in in reference to some sort of front setback. So here on the east side, the DRB had also talked about how do we get a little more space on that front public area. I think I heard Janet mention that. a little more space on that front um, public area? I think I heard Janet mention that. I guess what I would say is I, I don't want to set a precedent for needing a setback there, because I'm actually not afraid of the building being flushed at the upper level um, and maintaining an upper level streetscape. I do think in this case, it would be nice to imagine what five to 10 feet on that lower level would look like. I know we'd be sacrificing space somewhere. Um, whether that's storage, bike storage in the back somewhere, or whether that's um, you know, um, support space for the retail, I don't know. Um, but to give us an extra five or 10 feet on that front space at the ground floor. I would like to see that. And again, I, I don't, I don't think that we need, that I, I don't think I would support a, a building setback there, but I would um, support if the, the group, if we decided to try to get more space on that ground floor.
So Tom, I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not clear on what, what you said there. So.
So it's setting back the retail facade, setting in, um, pushing the retail facade inward to get more plaza space out front.
Okay, not, not the upper floors?
No.
Okay.
Um, you're talking about pushing this line back here?
Yeah, yeah. Which again, I know we lose retail and I know there's a lot of comments about retail. Um, but I think there's also a lot of public comment about that, that, that the, the feeling of being squeezed out into the road. And, and I think that um, I can also imagine how people would use that space out front and mimicking your park benches across the way on, in, you know, underneath that overhang could also draw people to the retail. It's not really going to block a door here or there. So anyway, just, just a thought about expanding that slightly and, and trying to figure out how you remedy that situation. I would, I would, I would like to see that and, and wonder if other people support that.
Interesting. Thank you, Tom. Um, Janet and then Maria.
So I'm, I'm a little confused, like when I read the dimensional table three, it says basic minimum you know, basic minimum side and rear yard, ten feet in the BG. And then um, there's a, a footnote A, which says that the board may reduce it under, you know, sort of hazy conditions. And so to me, it seems like the side setbacks should be 10 feet and there are good reasons for that. And so also jumping a little bit into the special permit and away from the SPR. Um, we do have, the planning board does have the um, we can add a condition increasing setbacks, um, you know, front side or whatever. Um, we, we can require greater than the minimum. So I just wanted to point those two things out. In terms of pushing, so I, I actually think the building is too much too close to the front street, but as to Tom's point about, you know, pushing back the retail, I don't think that we need to lose retail. Um, even if that is done, because there's a lot of space in the, you know, kind of the lobby space and kind of it looks, you know, to me, that looks like that would be primed for more retail. And I was gonna later, I don't want to go through so many issues. I think that we do need at least forty percent of business space. I don't know if it has to be retail, it could be different kinds of offices. But I think, you know, we don't want to lose that, we're already, we're already losing, you know, three or four businesses on this site. And we're losing the pub on the site next door. We've lost twelve or fifteen. Um, we need to keep space for businesses. And so, but I do think, I do, you know, think that ten foot setback in the front would be helpful. I'm, I'm sort of intrigued by Tom's idea of just moving the retail space back, but I wouldn't want to lose that. In fact, I'd like to increase that.
Thank you. Uh, Maria, please.
Um, I've been looking at my screen. I haven't been following along a mouse, but I'm a little confused about everyone's comments about the street side. Um, if I go to SVE drawing and look at the scale of twenty feet and then look at the plan, it looks like there's twenty four, twenty five feet at the north end. And then like I said earlier, nearly forty feet at the south end, if you go from the corner of the building toward the street. So I'm not sure where these pinch points are that people are talking about. There, there are, there are row ballers in the north. And um, so there's that one sidewalk that goes to that um, door that goes into, I think it was the lobby. I'm on a different plan. I'm on the SVE plan. Um, so I guess with twenty feet, I feel pretty comfortable. That's not a pinch point unless I'm missing something. Um, because you can walk on the concrete sidewalk and you can walk on the right of way. Uh, what is that point to? Let's see. So this is number three, but I think what it is, is um, those large granite per paper pieces. So I'm, I'm, I, yeah, I guess I want clarity from the board. Like what do you mean by pinch points? Um, because it's literally twenty feet at the north and then forty some at the south.
Maria, I'm not sure that, that anyone mentioned a pinch point. I, I mentioned that for one East Pleasant, but that, that, that was not for
Oh, oh, sure.
Proposal.
But not for eleven?
No, no, I, I don't think anyone's saying there's a pinch point here. Uh, I don't, I don't think so.
Then my other, okay, yeah. Okay. Well, then my other comment is that, uh, oh, so what I'm saying is I don't know that we need to widen the uh, space on the west by reducing them on retail. I guess that, that was what I was getting a sense of, that we should push that west wall further east, but only the first floor. I'm, I'm not clear on why we would need to do that. Um, and the other point, I forget who said it, but I was like saying that this project's like uh, filling in a missing tooth. I think, I think that's right on point because you know, on the town common, we have those big blocks where there are zero setbacks and it creates what everyone always points to when they say what they love about downtown, these two big block buildings. Um, and so I think that this project, you know, although it's not zero, it is continuing this sort of um, it, it, this continuity that creates a nice sense of place across from Kendrick Park. So I, I mean, uh, similar to um, Chris, Chris Brestrop's findings, you know, I feel it's a very uh, it works really well with um, sorry, it's kind of like, it, it, it does not create disharmony with the setbacks through the terrain, to the use. I mean, all the findings talking about the setbacks, saying that they don't create disharmony. Um, and that they work with the existing use scale and architecture of the buildings in the vicinity. I agree with all of that. And um, I would just hate to keep pushing and pushing the project smaller and smaller and losing more affordable units, more housing units. Um, I, I feel like we've seen the same project and that we've gotten more and more information. And tonight we've got even more. And, and in my mind, I've gotten the information I need. And um, and yeah, so I, I just, I, I think it's, it's there. I know that there's some hesitation about the street side, but with that right of way, I, I feel like that really resolves a lot of the um, issues about, you know, the pedestrian scale and how people experience this building, walking past it. So um, so yeah, I, I feel like I, uh, Jack, I do think some people did say, you know, like um, the west still needs more space. And um, I'm, I'm not sure I see that honestly, so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I was just using the terminology pinch point that I know I, I used, uh, but it wasn't for this uh, uh, project, but uh, good comments, Maria. Thank you so much. Uh, we have, uh, Chris, did you have your hand up? Yes.
I had my hand up, but I don't remember why.
Okay. All right. So we have Doug and then Janet.
Yeah, I wanted to just say thank you to my colleagues on the board for their responses to my question. Uh, asking about the setback potential on the west side. Um, you know, I, I don't, I'm not really sure I'm advocating that, but I thought it was worth talking about. Because this is the time for us to, to make a decision if we wanted to do that. And we certainly did get a lot of comments from a lot of people in, uh, you know, in the public hearing parts of this. Uh, you know, this process, asking us to push, push the building back. So uh, thank you for that, for those responses. And I'm, I'm, I'm not necessarily gonna advocate for it from this point on. Um, and then Kyle, I guess I will ask one question about the easement, and that is is that a perpetual easement that you and your team as owners of this project can retain in perpetuity?
Uh, it's a good question. That's an existing easement. Uh, that uh, was put in place when the bank property was, as I understand, when the bank property was split off from the other five properties that we're discussing. So that easement is in place and it serves the bank. And we don't want to impose on that or impose on the bank in any way, shape or form, nor do we have the uh, rights or desire to. So there's no intent to change that existing easement.
But, but you have access, you have rights to pass in that easement? And that is a right that you retain as an owner of that property?
Correct. So if you're driving in here, this easement serves the bank, it serves this property, which is four parcels. And it serves the parcel it's on, which is the pub parcel.
Okay, so, so no one can take that away from you?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Janet?
So Doug, the easement could be extinguished if um, um, Harrison Street or um, bought that property. And so, you know, who, if they owned all the parcels, they could extinguish that easement and kind of reconfigure things, but that would be down the road. So they're not, and this, and the easement doesn't live forever necessarily, but um, can live a very long time. Um, so I think it would be useful to have pictures from that northwest corner, like what a pedestrian sees. Um, and then also um, from Prey Street, because um, what other pets will see? We don't really have those views. I do appreciate the public space. I do feel like it's still going to be sort of dark and looming. Um, and so, and, and obviously if the building gets pushed back or you know, we have a ten foot setback on the west side. Um, there's less space inside the building. There could be more units depending on the configuration. Um, you know, maybe less, probably less profit. But so I just, I do think that um, I, I just think we should do the setbacks. Um, I wonder also, Jack, this is sort of a um, thing. I know we have a lot of people in the audience and we're talking about the setbacks. I haven't even talked about the rear setbacks. I want to like push that off. But would it make sense to take comment on this? Or are we going to have people wait till like the very end? Because we sort of have a, this is like a package here of public space.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've been having some very healthy discussions. I think um, I mean, I, I haven't really totally chimed in. I uh, I don't know that we've who, well, Andrew spoken, Johanna, uh, but I think we're, we're very close to getting some public comment. Uh, but I, if, if I can say, I, you know, I was intrigued by, by Doug's proposal to move it back. And then I think Tom had a an interesting um, um, you know, addendum to that. But it, it is, it, it is, you know, significantly wide open, similar to what we see. I think in the, in the other, um, you know, wider areas as you go toward Main Street. Uh, say in front of, uh, you know, henions and, and, and areas like that. And then I, again, Kendrick Park is just right there. It's just, it really, I think, will have a very open feel to it. Uh, with regard to the set, the side setbacks. Um, I, we're looking at this, you know, wonderful like green alley, you know, toward the cemetery. I think it's going to be gorgeous. Um, with regard to the rear setback, it, I, I agree, it's like an uh, eyesore dumpster fire. I mean, it, it is this ugly and unfortunately, there's some trees screening it from the cemetery. Um, and those trees will be replaced by, you know, younger trees. But I, I do feel like aesthetically from the cemetery that you're going to have a very nice looking building compared to what we have now. And so I, 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 you know, I, I think um, I'm okay with that ten feet uh, rear setback. Um, and I guess that's just, just some of my, you know, cursory comments on this at this point in time. So Janet, did you wanna?
If I, if I, could I, oh, Jack, just quickly, just to make sure, um, there's been make sure everybody's aware that these, this brick column and all the brick columns in the retail space, as they rise up and go through that wood ceiling, there's LED lights around that column. So those columns are lit at the top. Um, so it's a uh, it's a uh, it's intentionally a design feature that allows for this outdoor space to uh, have a very pleasant ambient light.
Downcast, of course.
Correct.
Uh, Janet?
Oh, in terms of the, the, the rear setback, um, I think it's easy to think, oh my God, what a nightmare for that back area, because the landowner for some reason has let it become a trash pit and I hope the town, you know, I, I wonder why that has been allowed to happen. Um, so I think that the view from the cemetery of one East Pleasant Street, eleven East Pleasant Street is just going to look like a canyon. And it's pretty shocking. I had some, I was visiting the semi, Emily Dickinson's grave with some friends and we just were, you know, looking at the cemetery, we just turned around. And it was just, I think one East Pleasant Street was being built. And it was like we almost stepped back. We just kind of reared back because it was seemed so, such a contrast. And I think the um, historical commission pretty much agrees. They, they kind of went along with the ten foot setback, but they preferred the twenty. Um, on the design review board, I don't remember her name. I'd want to say Sean or Sh- Shwan. The architect kept on talking about a set, a step back of the top floors to make it less kind of intense. And so I also think if it was a twenty foot setback, which um, is as we know, the requirement for that spot, it could be great space for the tenants. There's no real space on this thing for people to sit. The plaza is kind of small. The front plaza, I think, could be a place if it's bigger. But there's no real green space or outdoor amenities for the tenants in this, in this um, plan. And that could be a great seating area for tenants. Um, they could have tables, they could, you know, have lights and the whole thing, or you know, whatever. Um, a place to go. And I think the importance of a place to go, most of us experience in our own homes. But I think that, you know, I looked at one East Pleasant Street and I thought, where did people go during the pandemic? I mean, I think a possible place to go would be um, where the drain, not the, I have the wrong word, where the sweat, the um, the water recharge area is, that's a pretty big green space. But there's nothing on this site for people who live here to, to go anywhere outside. And um, that's a requirement of site plan review and special permit. I love the idea of Kendrick Park is there, but you know, the, the landowner has to provide the space. And Kendrick Park is an open after dark. And so people can't do recreation there after four thirty on a, on a, in a winter's night, or you know, the sun goes down earlier. And so I think that um, so I, I just think the rear setback is a great spot for, for the tenants and also to soften the impact of this very large building on a very historic cemetery.
Yeah. So if we, if we zoom in on the rear setback issue, we've gotten a couple of uh, uh, letters or memos, one from KP Law, one from uh, Kyle's attorney. I don't want to mispronounce his name, but Bobrowski perhaps, uh, which, which I think are pretty convincing that, that we are as a planning board, I think, uh, you know, within uh, you know, a safe area in terms of approving the ten foot. Uh, the twenty foot. Uh, again, if it was prescriptive, it would not be coming in front of the planning board. I mean, it would just Rob Moore would be approving it and we'd be done, sort of thing. But this is to the, taking all on account. Uh, and I think that reconstruction for a term kind of opens it up that Joe Bard mentioned in his memo. So again, that gives me, you know, uh, some, some ease with regard to the decision to, to keep it at ten versus trying to get more back there. And again, I personally, I've been in Amherst for twenty years. I, 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 I haven't been, not been in that cemetery until this project. Um, I, I, I know there's a lot of people that frequent it, but, and it's a, it's a, it's a, I know it's a um, it's a highlight for the town because of its historic nature. But I'm just thinking of like cemeteries in downtown Boston that are dwarfed by who knows what. And you know, that doesn't really, I don't think detract from uh, these, the historic nature of the cemeteries and people wanting to, to see things. So I just, I mean, um, I don't know. So Maria?
Yeah, I totally agree, Jack. I think all those memos from the various councils, um, well, the F E L council, uh, completely convinced me that we, it's within our right to just sort of understand this project, the space limitations it has. And um, yeah, I'm fine, especially with this latest rendering called image zero, zero, one, uh, showing it from the cemetery. It, it looks great. Um, and I think stepping back the top floor would actually look like a mistake. I think if you were to look at the building from other angles, it would look like this sort of notch in this really sort of uh, beautiful, simple form. It would just kind of make it look like, what, why is that there, you know, kind of thing. And so I, I feel like the attention on the street side is um, is the most important. And um, again, this is such a valuable, you know, amount of downtown has such minimal amount of usable, buildable space and to give it up to open space. And to give it up to open spaces when Kendrick Park is there seems a little backward. But again, I, I don't think there was sort of precedent saying, you know, other projects don't need to provide open space. It's just because this parcel is so strange, long and narrow, that it really seems like it should be taking advantage of this adjacent open space. And use its own parcel for as much sort of amenities for the people on the site, people walking by the site, people, you know, sitting outside on that sort of town right-of-way space. Um, uh, yeah, I think that those are my two points on it.
Yeah, and it, um, yeah, I, and I, I mean, I don't, I know, you know, there's many neighbors that, that utilize the cemetery. I don't want to say it's. Again, I, I'm impressed by it, but it, it's um. I didn't see very many people there when we were on the site visit, you know. Um, you know, but it, it is, it is a resource. But if I'm in the cemetery, I'm kind of looking at the gravestones, and I'm not looking along the perimeter of a cemetery. That's not why I'm there. Uh, and, and it's just, you know, there's, it's rich with regard to, um, you know, the things that cemeteries bring in terms of history. But uh, hey, I'm, I'm wondering if now would be a good time to take a short break and kind of like um. Kind of regroup, uh, get some public comment unless there's, you know, probably about time for that. But let's take a little recess. And come back at, you know, around, you know, eight, ten. Does that sound good? All right, so everyone just uh take their video off, put themselves on mute, and we'll reconvene. Maria, is your hand up still, or?
He may not be back, Jack.
Okay, I'll just lower it.
Doug, I can never see Maria or her hand, so I'm so happy you can.
Yeah.
Well, you can't see it, Pam. I've been hitting star nine, and sometimes it goes there and sometimes it doesn't.
Yeah, I'm sure with star nine, I don't know that you can actually lower it. No problem.
Oh, well, if, yeah, if you can lower it for me, that'd be great. I, I've, I've been toggling mute with the mute button, but I didn't know. I might have just hit star nine again.
You're doing a great job, Maria. What is like two o'clock?
Oh, my God.
Yeah, but I, I'm currently making a pot of coffee, so um, I can go another two hours, no problem. Yeah, I had like a four-hour-long hike today, too, so I'm physically and mentally a little bit, but this is worth it to me. So, yep. Keep going. I'll take a long nap tomorrow. Are there a lot of, uh, what do you call it, attendees? I, you know, I have no sense of that.
Uh, there's ten.
Oh, I thought there were a lot more.
Yeah. Or an attendee, and no, you're not. You're a panelist.
No, just a quantity. I have no sense. Ten, huh? Okay.
So we got everybody back, I believe, huh? So Pam, you want to flip us back?
I am, I am flipping us back. I'm just looking to make sure I see. Everyone except for Maria, but I know she's here because I hear her. So, okie doke, carry on.
Okay, um, so we're returning from, from a short break here, and I would like to open this up to public comment and give people. A chance to, to raise their hands. And I see Pam Rooney, number one. So Pam, why, why don't you begin? And state your name and address, please.
Hi, Pam.
Hi, Pam. Pam Rooney, forty-two Cottage Street. Thanks for letting me speak. Um, I have a couple of questions, and then maybe people could respond after I finish. Um, I heard One East Pleasant Street mentioned in something about maybe widening the green space. Um, who, who paid for that? Is that actually a project underway? And hopefully, the town doesn't have to pay for that mistake. Mr. Wilson, could we see the, the north facade, please? One of those images that you had up was really helpful. Or whoever's, whoever is.
What would you like to see, Pam?
If we could see the, the images again of the building. And there was a great image, a recent one of the north facade of the building.
From uh, where the, show the bike rack, show the bike rack?
Probably from North Pleasant Street or East Pleasant Street.
Kyle, do you want to do that, or do you want me to try?
I could do it.
Okay, thank you.
It's easier to talk about it as, as we see it.
So, oh, Pam, since there's a little, there is a pause here.
Perfect.
Um, the, 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 One East Pleasant Street, I mean, Chris can correct me, but that was, that was built um. Consistent with the, the zero offset. So there was no mistake there, but, you know, perspective-wise.
I thought, I, I thought I heard some discussion about maybe the town was going to be uh. Ameliorating that, that horrible situation, but maybe.
And I, I just threw that out there as like on my wish list, you know, but it would, it would be on the, I would be on the town's nickel. It, there's not a mistake by Archipelago. It was proposed, reviewed.
So thank you, Mr. Wilson, for showing this image. So um, uh, in all of the public meetings that we've, that we've. Been listening since May, I think, there has been a concern expressed by many, many people. That the north facade of this building is pretty massive. And um sadly, I have not heard any or seen any um ramifications. Or, or um modification of this plan by the architects to actually respond to some of those concerns. There's a slash that you described, which in this picture is completely blocked by uh, it's by the bank. So it's insignificant as far as a, a spatial defined definition. And it occurs to me that even if you took your gray zinc and utilized the gray zinc as the, as the material for the fourth or fifth floor. That it would in fact help break up some of that. Height and width of facade. And I'd like to have the, the board discuss something like that. That seems like a very low-cost change that would actually affect some um, something. We have, there's a, there's a fifteen-foot high or twelve-to-fifteen-foot-high brick wall on that north facade that the pedestrians have to walk along. And again, it's just, I would love to see some movement from Archipelago to address the issue of this bulkiness and the blockiness. And nobody seems to be holding your feet to the fire. Um. The question is, there was another good image that I think Mr. Jemsek described as a wonderful green alley going between uh Eleven East Pleasant Street and One East Pleasant Street. That, that um, A, doesn't really reflect what your new plan shows, so it's a little misleading. Um, but it occurs to me that, in fact, because Eleven East Pleasant Street doesn't really get to utilize. This strip of green, the strip of Armstrong maples on its south side. It is really all to the benefit of eleven, of One East Pleasant Street. Why not push the whole building? Since, since you refuse to give up uh the setback, the side setbacks, let's take, let's take the south setback and make it zero or, or five. And let's make the north side the ten-foot setback as it should be. That is the side that the public will actually see. The public will not see the benefit or get the benefit of this green alley. Um, on, on the south side of the building. So let's flip it and give the public actually something that it can see from a distance. Which will help soften that huge north facade. Um, lastly, I guess, the, the interpretation of, of section nine point two-two, which allows. You know, a full override of, of non-conformity. I know the town has put this some good use, but it concerns me greatly that nine point two-two can be used. In any case where there is a non-conforming use, um, in, in some cases. Even to allow uh inappropriate uses or setbacks that cannot be really controlled by a board. So I would love to hear some feedback on this very, very broad general interpretation of nine point two-two. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Um, one, we have Kyle. If you're willing to uh speak to some of those points.
I, I think that obviously the intent, we have an eighty-foot-wide site. We've got a sixty-foot-wide building. Um, we've worked really hard to create a situation where there's a new view back to the cemetery that currently does not exist because the Piper Building blocks it. And all of Cousins Market blocks it. So we've in uh, worked hard to, to provide that. I think that the trees obviously serve um both buildings, serve the courtyard, and will obviously be apparent by the pedestrians. On the street and anywhere um, in the, in the rendering here.
Okay, um, and you have Nina? Nina, um, state your name and address.
Hi, Nina.
Yes, hello. Um, Nina Weil, one oh three High Street in Amherst.
Thank you.
Um, I, I actually have one question first, and Kyle, I'm not quite sure if you're from Archipelago or from the architectural firm that designed the building.
He's Archipelago.
Okay, and who, who, who are the architects who designed the building?
Uh, Kyle?
Uh, they're shown on the plans here, Modus Studio.
Yes, and I can't read the address or anything. I've no idea.
They're in Fayetteville, Arkansas.
They're in Arkansas. So I, I guess I, I also was wondering why, why we can't use a more local architect?
Uh, Modus just won a National AIA Design Award for Housing. Um, we've, we've uh worked with them based on their broad experience and, and skill.
Okay. So I, all I really want to talk about is the west facade. And um, I, I agree a lot with what Janet McGowan was saying. I actually feel there is a bit of a pinch point right there at that north. West corner, um, where the lower level comes almost flush to the facade of the rest of the building. And the sidewalk um cuts back toward the building. So, so to me, that, that is kind of a pinch point. And um, I do want to say something about the whole front plaza. In the rest of downtown, we have curbside parking. And that may sound like, oh, but cars are ugly, and who wants curbside parking? But. Stationary cars are much quieter than moving cars. Stationary cars kick up less dirt and dust than moving cars. Stationary cars kick up less dirt and dust than moving cars and create a little sense of buffer and safety. So even though I really do appreciate that there's been a big effort to enlarge that public space, um, I still feel it's a bit skimpy, especially that pinched corner. It kind of funnels in and just when you kind of want it to be gracious and open and inviting. Um, I'm a little concerned about the big overhang at the west um, south corner with that big round column. But ma- maybe maybe that would work for retail. And I'd like to see the first floor plan and just see how much retail there is. If we could see the floor plan of the ground level.
Kyle, you want to? First floor.
Do you want me to just do it as as public coming in? Or do you want me to do it all kind of at the wrap here?
Uh, I I think we're doing well with just, you know, one on one here.
So is all the pink retail?
Uh, we have listed the seventeen hundred square foot retail space. We have five hundred square foot back of house. We have a leasing lounge, leasing, fitness, parcel, bike, uh, hot water, electric, storage, trash and service, all in pink.
I see.
We have lobby and affiliated spaces and hallways in yellow. And then we have residential units in blue.
Oh, I see. So the lobby is this facing facing the south. This this that's the main lobby entrance facing south there.
Yeah.
And the entrance is right below it, right there.
And there's one to the north. You can come into the lobby either side.
Uh huh, uh huh. So you kind of point out.
I'm drawing a circle. I'm drawing a circle around. Is that the retail? Does that show up?
Yes, that that is seventeen hundred square foot retail and five hundred square foot back of house that would serve.
Okay.
So that's probably for one client.
Uh, one tenant, hopefully, yes.
Tenant, one tenant.
All right. Well, thank you, Nina.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, Elizabeth Verling, please. State your name and address.
Hi Liz. Yes, this is Elizabeth Verling at thirty-six Cottage Street. Thank you for recognizing me. Um, I've already stated this in letters that I've written to various people, but um, I just wanted to say that I think the the view of the north side and also the views of the of the public way are somewhat misleading um, in the sense that knowing that I walk by this routinely multiple times a week. Basically, the space is no wider than what is um, in front of that northwest corner of One East Pleasant, which is not very much. I'd also like to reiterate what Ms. Weils just said is that those benches are basically sitting where buses are going to be pulling in. Um, if I understand correctly, where where they stand. So I don't think those benches are going to be very appealing right there up against the street. And looking at national standards, um, national standards are for eight foot sidewalks in this type of area. So maybe the fact that we have six foot sidewalks for the town is just because these are old regulations and we should be rethinking, rethinking that. I also just wanted to say that I don't think that, I think the idea of saying, oh, this is just the same kind of buildings that are up against the sidewalk in the AJ Hastings block. Um, that's really not the case. In that block, we have multiple small storefronts. Um, the ground floor is broken up from the upper floors and those buildings are only three stories tall. So this is a very different look and feel. And I really would like you know, Doug Marshall and Janet McGowan to push more for additional setback, which I think would make this front space be able to have more green than just trees sticking out of the grate. Um, and I find it a little bit disingenuous that the zoning bylaws are applied when they're convenient and they're not applied when they're not convenient. Like the twenty foot setback from the from the cemetery. I agree that I don't care if we give another ten feet to the cemetery, but I would like to give another ten feet to the public. And that would also be setback consistent with the spoke and with the former Bertucci's becoming whatever it's becoming, that would be more consistent with the setback on those buildings. So rather than using One East Pleasant as the precedent for setback, let's use the setback on these other buildings. I realize it's the same setback as the bank, but the bank's only one story. That's way different than five stories. So, thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. And I see no other hands from the public at this time. So turning it back to the board. Uh, I see Janet's hand and then Doug's hand. Hey Kyle, no, your hand is not up, right Kyle? No. All right, Janet, please.
Um, so I I and I know this is, it's hard to kind of manage the topics at these these kind of hearings, but going to the legal analysis by KP Law. I I was perplexed and a little befuddled by the two emails from KP Law. So what I was hoping for was what I think of as a regular legal analysis, which is what does the statute say? What does the bylaw say? What do the cases say? What are the legal standards that we should apply? And then have these legal standards apply to the facts that we have. And so, um, and then you can figure out possible outcomes. And so that that's what I was looking for. I I know I had a wide net of questions, but they were all, hopefully, they would have been answered in that normal kind of legal analysis. I also know that people don't like to answer my questions, which is why I keep asking them because I I'm I ask them with purpose. Um, so I would love to see a better and more clear legal analysis. I found it really hard to read. The I read the first email and I was like, huh, you know, and I had to go back and look. And I've done some research in this area. I read cases, I read Mr. Bobrowski's section on this several times. Um, I read enough to know that I needed to do more research. And then I also realized that's not really my job and no one's paying me. So I was hoping that KP Law could provide some depth and a little more clarity about nine point two two. I know that the town is using this kind of as a way of it's what I see is a possible incorrect expansion of what could be, should be allowed for nonconforming buildings. And so to me, that's a real, this is an important understanding and analysis. After I read, so I was actually very confused. And I read the second email and I was like, you know, this is too late in the afternoon. I can't sort this out. Um, and so I I I think that people or laypeople reading those emails could think, oh, it's okay. And I don't know how anyone could say why with any understanding of the law. And so I would love to get to kind of do a do over and get sort of a more clear um, sort of a traditional legal memo on this topic of I I was left wondering after reading these, like, when would a variance ever be needed? And you know, it's you know, can, you know, is, can we just take any nonconforming building and build anything in its place? And there's never a reason to go for a variance. And I know that's not true. And so I would love to see a more clear legal analysis that everyone can understand, including me. And so, you know, I just, I don't, I don't know if I can get a do over or just something a little bit more clear and traditional in terms of a legal memo on this. I I didn't, I'm not trying to like push a point to say, you know, to say no. I don't know when I would say no and when I would say yes, based on those two emails, just coming kind of late in the day.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm not an attorney like you are, Janet, but I I do know that yeah, the way it's written, and I'm looking at KP Law's thing that that we can, we can deliberate like we're doing now and decide whether you know, it's acceptable or not when it's not twenty foot. I think I think we got a clear path from the town's attorney. I mean, I don't know, I don't, I don't need additional research, you know, personally. But maybe the other board members, you know, feel differently. But I have Doug and then Maria. Doug?
Uh, yeah, I I guess I I'm I'm not in a position to answer Janet's question. I guess I would expect Chris to be the one to tell us whether what she received from the town attorney is all we could reasonably expect from that attorney or whether uh, you know, that attorney just decided to send it in an email form because of time constraints or something else. Uh, but the comment I was going to make was was was, I guess, a follow up to Elizabeth Verling's comment. And that is probably also a question for Chris. Uh, whether whether this section of East Pleasant Street is ever likely to have or be able to accommodate parallel parking by vehicles along the travelway. And also uh, actually, I can't remember my second, my second question. Oh, actually, yeah, it was about the width of the sidewalk because I also find the six foot sidewalk to be kind of I don't know, skimpy or, you know, minimal. And just extending that width from east from One East Pleasant Street, I would hope that we could eventually get to an eight foot sidewalk. And maybe that's part of refining the improvements in front of the building, uh, which I would be looking for when this comes back to us. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Uh, Maria, oh, excuse me, Chris first and then Maria.
Chris, you're muted.
Sorry, um, I I did ask Joel Bard for an analysis. I sent him Janet's questions. I sent him questions of my own and he came back with um, what he sent us, which is essentially that it's really up to the board to decide. And if the board can make a finding that what is being proposed is not more detrimental to the neighborhood, then that can support the the reduced setback on that side. It can support the declaration that it's a reconstruction of a nonconforming structure. And we do have Mark Bobrowski here, who represents the applicant. Unfortunately, we don't have Joel Bard here. I think he's up in a plane somewhere coming back from California. I did speak with him this afternoon. But we do have Mark Bobrowski here and if we wanted to question him about this, he may have some insight.
Okay.
What was the other thing? Oh, six foot sidewalk versus eight foot sidewalk. I think it's legitimate for the planning board to ask the applicant to install an eight foot sidewalk, if that's what you would like to see. Um, I think what the applicant was trying to do was match the existing town sidewalks um, at either end. But if you would prefer to have the eight foot sidewalk in here and less of the pavers, that could be accomplished. So you can make that recommendation or that suggestion.
And then there's a parking thing as well, right?
Oh, so I haven't seen any plans for that portion of East Pleasant Street, but the the DPW is always making plans for different parts of town. And I know there have been comments that East Pleasant Street is very wide in that location. And it could be that DPW is thinking about putting parallel parking spaces on one side or the other. But I haven't seen those plans myself.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Maria and then Andrew.
Oh, did you want to let Mark speak or no?
Oh, um, absolutely. Good point. Uh, he is here.
Yeah, I think that if Mark, you know, Mark can provide some depth if if that would be helpful. Um, I think that the letters that have been written have have done that. But if if you'd like Mark to opine, he could.
Yes, I that'd be very helpful, I believe. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I call your attention to the wording first of the bylaw, which is in section nine point two two. The first sentence doesn't seem to be applicable here. It talks about nonconforming use of a building to be changed to a specified use. So it's more focused on uses. The second sentence says, said authority may also authorize under a special permit, nonconforming use of a building structure of of a building structure or land to be extended or a nonconforming building to be structurally altered, enlarged or reconstructed, provided the authority finds such, in this case, reconstruction shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming use or the nonconforming building. So what the court is saying there specifically with regard to nonconforming buildings is that they can be quote reconstructed. The whole question turns on the the issue of what does reconstruction means. As I said in my memorandum, this was the focus of a case that Judge Trombley had at the Land Court back around two thousand, two thousand and one. And it made its way up to the appeals court. Neighbors on Nantucket claimed that a building could be reconstructed only if it was placed on its original footprint and not in any bigger area. Um, the court rejected that. And the quote that the court provided is that reconstruction simply means the actor process of rebuilding, recreating or reorganizing something citing Black's dictionary. There is nothing implicit, I'm still quoting the court, in the meaning of the term or its use in the bylaw that excludes reconstructing a structure at a different site. So as I said in chapter six of my book, and I'm, this often locks me into a position that I really can't change because it's available in the fourth edition. This allows reconstruction of a building after voluntary demolition, not just after catastrophic demolition. And it's been used to great advantage back here in the capital of teardown, which is basically every where around where I live in Concord, Lexington and the communities around one twenty eight.
Thank you, Mark. And and again, we're we're actually increasing uh, the setback from what the current setback is, is.
Yes, the the court addressed that in the Glidden case. They were improving the setback. The neighbors argued that it, the building had to be shrunk until it conformed, but the court rejected that argument and said that the building could be relocated. And because it was relocated in greater conformance, it met the test that you have in section nine point two two.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Marie, then Andrew and then Janet, please.
Uh, thanks for that, Mark. I was going to basically say that in my experience on working on residences in East Hampton, North Hampton, South Deerfield, all basically almost a town city around here. It's exactly that. It's, um, if there's already a nonconforming structure um, in regard to setback, you can rebuild anything. You can add a whole story, you can enclose it. As long as you don't increase nonconformity. And this is my experience for residences. I haven't had it with commercial. But that's how all these towns have been interpreting that. And, um, in fact, one town, I forget which one it was, was it was just, it wasn't a variance, it was just an administrative review. I just needed to show the original footprint and then show what the new project was going to be on that original footprint. And it didn't even need to go to a planning board of any kind. So, um, the the concept's the same. Um, they just, each town and city has a different way of treating it. Um, but that's exactly how I read it and how I've been using it in my sort of over a decade of working here is that, um, as long as you're not increasing the nonconformity, you can, you know, add a whole nother floor, uh, uh, change all of the exterior. Uh, and and I I guess to that point also, as long as it's not more detrimental to the adjacent properties, but, um, yeah, I haven't proposed anything like that, I hope. So, um, but thanks for that. That was very uh, good as far as sort of clarifying the the sort of memos we got because like, yeah, we're most of us. Because like, yeah, we're, most of us are not attorneys and it just sort of went over our heads. But as far as just the use of it, um, as an architect, I have definitely used it the way that was, um, explained to us just now.
No, you're welcome. It replaces a very unworkable case that was coin of the realm for years called Llamalas. I don't remember the town. But in that case, the court ruled that you had to leave one wall standing. And the court actually ended with a fight between neighbors and the proponent when he says the wind blew the wall down and they said he pushed it over. So this is a whole lot better world.
Yeah. Thank you, Maria. Uh, Andrew and then Janet.
Thanks, Jack. Um, so, Chris, I was curious about the, the eight foots, uh, if we did go to eight-foot sidewalk, that would presumably add two feet to the east, not to the west, or could it be done, could that sidewalk replace the pavers? When you're on mute.
Um, the sidewalk could replace part of the pavers.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that might be worth looking into. I, because there's hardscape there and pavers, I think like it'll be still fine for path to travel, but I don't know. Uh, just from an ADA perspective, it might be nicer to have the, 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 the eight foot just may make it easier for, for two folks in wheelchairs to pass. But I do like that idea. I think that a six-foot is exceptionally narrow. So I'd, I'd be supportive of, of making that request.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, Janet, please.
So, um, I appreciate the information provided by Attorney Bobrowski and, um, I know that he's an expert in this field. I also know we always seem to wind up talking about residential cases, which is not what we have here. Um, I think I'm trying to say sort of gracefully is, I would like KP Law to present us with a memo, a legal opinion, um, that presents, that does the legal analysis that I had been looking for originally. And he, and, and presenting it, you know, representing the board and in our effort, not a particular client. Um, so, I mean, I could start talking about cases and language and I just don't wanna go there. I just, I think we need our town attorney to, to, to present to us clearly what the standards are. And please, let's not talk about residential tear downs, because that's not what we have. And we don't know, I mean, has the non-conformity increased? Um, that's a factual question. This, this building, you know, so that's, so we haven't done that analysis, um, substantially more detrimental. We can discuss that. But let's start, let's start off from a, a, a legal presentation from our attorney that I find comprehensible um, and easy to understand. Um, I don't, I just, I'm trying to be diplomatic and say, I think that was a very poor presentation of information by KP Law. I didn't appreciate it at the last minute. I didn't really, I had trouble piecing together two different emails and the cases. There are key cases in this area. We don't know what they are, cause no one's, you know, all of them, we don't have to go through every single one. But there is a way of establishing what the statute says, what the bylaw says, what the cases say, setting up a legal framework for analysis, and then we apply the facts of this case to those standards. And I don't think we have that yet. Um, and I think we need it from somebody who's not representing somebody, but representing us and our effort to figure out nine point two-two, which seems to be, I'm concerned that we're using it way too expansively. And, you know, we're basically going into the area of variances. It's very unclear to me when, you know, with a non-conforming building, you'd be going in front of the ZBA with a variance. And I, I think we need to understand that. And so I would like to ask KP Law to do a memo, which is, I think we were asking weeks and weeks ago for.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Uh, I feel like there's a preponderance of, of, uh, you know, information that, you know, again, beginning with Rob Mora, uh, interpretation, KP Law has, has, has made this, you know, the, the reconstruction verbiage, I think, is significant, but, um, we just had Mark, uh, Bobrowski speak. Um, I don't know. Um, it seems like there's, you know, it's, it, we, there are waivers that we, that we can allow. And I think, you know, the eye test back, you know, viewing from the cemetery, we've done the rendering back there. We know how it's gonna, you know, improve in terms of getting rid of the buildings there that, and, and, and all the trash and all that, that is, that is there. But, um, I'm pretty happy with interpretations to date, the, you know, in my, my opinion. Um, Maria, is your hand still up? Probably not.
No, I, I did. I raised it while you.
Oh, okay.
Um, I agree, I don't feel like I need more, I'm sorry, I, I agree. I don't feel like I need more attorney research or information. I feel like I have the facts I need.
Very good. Thank you. Um, any other comment from the board?
Jack, can I, oh?
Yes, what?
Can we just hold on one moment? I had gotten, um, message that Chris was having power issue, but I see her back now.
Okay.
Chris, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you. It seems that I wasn't completely plugged in. I'm very sorry about that.
Okay.
Action. Okay. I'm plugged in. Thank you.
Okay, perfect.
So I, Johanna, did you have your hand up? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I've been toggling back and forth. Sorry.
Okay.
Um, you know, I think my reading, also not a lawyer, but basically KP Law says we as a board are empowered to make this decision. And I, I personally don't think we need to spend more town resources to get more clarity on that. Like, that seems pretty clear to me. So I am kind of with Jack and Maria on that. Let's not send them down an expensive wild goose chase, but we don't need to.
Thank you. All right. Well, we're at the point, um, you know, we can, uh, consider, you know, closing the hearing. Someone wants to make that motion. I know there are some, some, you know, fine points that were, that we could uh, discuss more. Um, again, you know, we've been talking setbacks and front and and rear and inside and all that, but, um, I feel like we, we've gone through this. But again, Janet, you got your hand up.
So does this mean that we're, we will close the hearing and then go on to discuss conditions like requiring forty percent of retail, of, you know, commercial or business? I mean, I don't understand what, where we are.
Well, no, no one has made a motion.
Are you interested in other news that people have? Are there, do you wanna ask the board if they have any other questions or issues?
Well, that's what I'm looking at. I don't see hands up. So that's, that's why I said that, because I didn't see a lot of, uh, traction for further discussion. So, uh, Chris?
I see Dorothy Pam's hand up in the, um, public realm.
Okay, we want, we want to grab her. Okay. Dorothy?
Hi, Dorothy.
State your name and address, of course.
Two-two-nine Amity Street, Amherst. Uh, Dorothy Pam. Um, I just want to make a brief comment, which is when a lawyer says it's up to the group, that means to me, as a person of the public, not a lawyer, that it's not by right, it's not clear, and there's an area that you can decide. But I'm concerned about precedent. And this particular planning board might feel very happy with how they're working. But they should think about other planning boards, other members, and would they be happy with them having that total discretion? And to say, oh, we have to do this, we have to do that. I mean, I just think, are we, the idea that because something existed and was non-conforming, you can knock it down and then put up something that's not conforming in its place, is kind of magical thinking. I'm not saying it's not illegal, but it's magical. Um, is that the kind of precedent you want? So that, that's just my comment there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and Maria?
Oh, I didn't know how to lower my hand. But, um, do we normally go through find, well, do we normally go through findings with, where we go through all the sections or, I, I forget what the next step was. Do we do a motion first or do we go through findings? Maybe, Chris?
Yeah, Chris?
So I think it would be useful to go through findings and conditions before you close the public hearing, because then if you need new information, you can get the new information. If you close the public hearing, then you can't, um, accept any new information.
So, um, Doug had his hand up.
Yeah, I think, uh, Chris has explained to me, I, I was, one question I had after last week's meeting was whether, you know, closing the hearing means we simply don't hear from the public anymore, or whether we can't uh, obtain or create any additional analysis as we deliberate.
So my understanding is that you can ask for clarifications on things, but you can't receive new information or new testimony. So my.
But, but could, could I, as a board member, create new information that I then share with the board?
No.
Okay.
Then I, then I guess I would support going through the findings now.
Okay. So, um, either Chris or I could, could do that, but I imagine, Chris, you have a better handle on, on the drafts. Are you okay with doing that, Chris?
Sure. Do you wanna go through the findings first and then?
Okay, but Janet's got her hand up, but, and, um, and then we can do it. Janet?
So I, I would just, I would like to see a better legal opinion from KP Law or another attorney outside council. I don't want, and I, I appreciate Mr. Bobrowski's very short memo and, you know, argument in support of his client. I just don't know that we know enough about whether, what's, when you reach, go for a variance, when it's okay to, you know, do the nine point two-two by special permit. We don't even know if this is increasing the non-conformity or not. I don't know what the cases hold, I, you know, and I, I actually, I just wanna be very honest with you. This is, I'm a lawyer and I've been looking at this and I've been getting the email and I just don't, I don't think we've gotten good legal advice from our town council. I hate to say that. I, I don't think it's clear. I think it's clear that everybody thinks it's okay to proceed. Um, but I don't think we have the information we need legally and also just in terms of what is the non-conformity. And blowing up a building by ten, that might, that probably increases the non-conformity is just okay. Um, and, you know, I just, you know, I, I guess we can keep going on, but I do think it's, you don't, there's no particular rush. There's no reason why we can't get, you know, maybe we should ask an outside attorney. I know KP Law is on retainer. I just don't want a bunch of late afternoon emails that don't really make that much sense to me. Kind of like, hey, you know, here's, here's my thinking off the top of my head. I wanna know what the law says. I, I would never hand this in to anybody, what we've received. Um, and I'd kinda like not to be ignored by, by more members, you know, for my professional opinion. I, I find it kind of insulting.
Yeah, but I think we talked about a scenario, just leaving what, all that awful building back there and actually reconstructing using that existing facade. Who would want that? And again, we're a planning board.
That's not what the cases say. So.
Uh, Doug?
Yeah, I guess, uh, it seemed, I guess, uh, the legal cases aside, the level of whether we're increasing the non-conformity, uh, wouldn't that be something that between the planning staff and us, we could decide? And I guess, you know, I might start by asking Chris for her analysis of the existing non-conformity versus how this new building might non-conform.
Chris?
Um, so the existing building is, um, about one foot, one and a half feet from the property line at one point. And it's about seven feet from the property line at another point. Um, so that's pretty close. This proposal is to have the entire building be ten feet from the property line. So I do not view this as increasing the non-conformity. In order to increase the non-conformity, you would have to have part of the building be at least as close or closer than the existing buildings, which this is not. Um, so I think it's clearly not increasing the non-conformity. Rob Mora is here in the wings, if you wanted to ask his opinion. He's the zoning enforcement officer for the town. And, um, he could probably be brought over as a panelist if he would agree to that and, um.
Yeah, if he, if he would. Yeah, because I, I know he, you know, he was the, kinda like the front line there in consideration of, of what would be reasonable. And I think he was okay with a five-foot, you know, within the initial proposal.
Yep.
So, Rob, if, if you are willing, uh, we'd love to bring you in and just kinda give your perspective on this.
We could measure it.
Yeah, yeah, Jack, I, I'm here now, uh, Rob Moore, building commissioner. So, yeah, and, and, you know, I did make the recommendation to the applicant originally to, uh, when I saw the original proposal at five feet, uh, that they have this path to, uh, to make this application through nine point two-two. So that is where it all started. Uh, obviously, since then, they've, they've decided to increase that rear setback to ten feet. Uh, but, you know, we've used this over and over again. I've used it in other communities in similar ways. And I think KP Law, you know, as, as, uh, general and basic as the opinion or the information that was provided, uh, does what it was, what it needed to do for tonight and established that the path is there. Uh, and that's what we were really, you know, looking to confirm with, with Joel Bard, is that, uh, nine point two-two can be used in this way. And I think he points out that our bylaw is even more generous than, uh, than, than state law. And that, this isn't the only area that it does that. So our bylaw is very inclusive by use. So it doesn't matter what's being proposed. My job is to find a place for it. Even if the bylaw doesn't specifically say that this can be done here, uh, in a particular zoning district, I have to find a way for it to fit. And that's different from other bylaws that say if it's not specifically listed, it's prohibited. So it's just another way that our bylaw is consistent in being more generous and open to, uh, these opportunities. So I do wanna address, I know Janet has mentioned a couple of times, what's a, what's a variance? What is a variance use? Because we, we, we don't need it often in Amherst, uh, like, like we would, or we have in other communities that I've worked in and, and see all the time is that we have this nine point two-two, and if there's a non-conforming, uh, situation that exists, um, that's when nine point two-two works. If there wasn't a non-conformity that existed, then the only option would be variance. So, um, you know, i- if, if the setback was non-conforming, but the lot coverage wasn't, they do not have the opportunity under nine point two-two to vary the lot coverage above our minimum standard. That would require a variance. So everything that's being asked for here tonight with this application is either modifying, adjusting, reconstructing, however you wanna look at it, a non-conforming setback, uh, which is what nine point two-two was designed to do.
Thank you, Rob. Janet?
So my last attempt on this is just say we should accurately measure the current non-conforming setback, because it's, it's not just one foot or seven feet. It's different, at different points. But I sort of give up after that. I just think we should have at least a common set of facts to work off of. I would like to have a common set of legal standards and principles, but that at least we understand.
Uh, Chris?
We have a surveyed plan that's stamped by SVE associates and they are surveyors and engineers. And that's what I use to measure the setback. So if someone could bring up that plan, that might be helpful in, um, helping us to sort out what the existing setback is. It's one of, it's one of the first SVE plans. Perhaps, um, Kyle could bring that up. It's part of the civil set. There it is. There it is. And if he zeros in on the area at the back of the building, there's that one place that is towards the south. That's a little corner of the building jutting out near the property line. And that is about one and a half feet, based on my measurement. I used a scale to measure that. And then further up where the other corner is, that's about seven and a half feet, I think. So both of those points are closer than the 10 feet, which is currently being proposed. And this is a surveyed plan. And so I think we should believe it.
I would also add, One East Pleasant is five feet back.
What about the spots that are farther than seven feet and 10 feet on the back of the building?
Those don't count. It's just whoever's closest.
Okay, thank you. So Chris, why don't, why don't we go over your draft findings?
Okay, these are findings that relate to the building project at 11 and 13 East Pleasant Street. And we're addressing the required findings under Section 11.2 for the zoning bylaw. So I will read these slowly and pause after each one to see if anybody has any problems or questions. So the first one is 11.2400. The project is in conformance with all appropriate provisions of the zoning bylaw. The applicant has applied for a special permit to modify the site setback and height requirements under footnote A of Table 3, and has applied for a special permit to allow a 10-foot setback rather than a 20-foot setback on the eastern side of the site under Sections 6.141 and 9.22 of the zoning bylaw. Next one is 11.2401. Town amenities and abutting properties will be protected through minimizing detrimental or offensive actions. The proposed use of the property is unlikely to create detrimental or offensive actions. Exterior lighting will be downcast and will not shine onto adjacent properties or streets. 11.2402. Abutting properties will be protected from detrimental site characteristics resulting from the proposed use. Again, lights will be downcast and/or shielded. 11.2403. Provision of adequate recreational facilities, open space, and amenities has been addressed because the proposed project is located in downtown Amherst, across the street from Kendrick Park, a public open space, and is adjacent to the West Cemetery and other public open space. The adjac-, the applicant is proposing to make site improvements to the public right-of-way in front of the property along East Pleasant Street, including tree plantings, seating, and a bicycle rack. And the applicant is proposing a generous landscaped area and a small sitting area to the south of the proposed building. 11.2410. Unique or important natural, historic, or scenic features will be protected. Although a line of existing trees will be removed as part of the building project, the Historic West Cemetery, which lies to the east of the proposed building, will be protected with a relocated fence to be located along the property line and a row or rows of new trees planted along the property line with the cemetery. The Historical Commission has reviewed this project with respect to protecting the West Cemetery and has made recommendations which have been forwarded to the planning board members.
So we have a hand up. So yeah, everyone chime in for, you know, it should be a discussion. I saw Janet and then Doug.
I, I don't think that we ever, since I've been in the planning board, jumping back to provision of adequate, I've lost track. 11.2403, provision of adequate recreational facilities, open space, and amenities. So I, I've never seen us look to another park or another facility for this. And when you think of the word provision, you think you provide it. And so we have required onsite spaces for recreation. I know there is, I think there's a recreational spot inside this building, but I'm not quite sure. I remember that. I do think we need some more open space, like the design review board has recommended more space for the plaza or combining that with the front plaza. And then I think we could do, you know, seating or outdoor space in the, I can't, I'm always forgetting the name, the, the area for stormwater recharge or the holding area. That also could be a space. So I'd like to see those sort of discussed. I don't want to say Kendrick Park is nearby, so we don't have to do it. I know, I think that's a bad precedent.
Kyle, I, I, I don't recall what the amenities within the building are.
Yeah, can I remember to hear? I think we should talk about those, if we're going to talk about it.
May I just say something?
Yes.
For both Kendrick Place and for One East Pleasant Street, Kendrick Park was used as a, an available open space. And we're talking about dense downtown development, and it's not very common to have green open space on properties in, in the dense downtown development, if, especially if they are surrounded by, which is, in this case, it is surrounded by publicly owned open space. So the board has in the past talked about the fact that properties are across from Kendrick Park, and that provides the open space that is talked about in 11.2403.
Thank you. Doug, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, I think I would probably word this differently to, to say that, and, and sort of key off of the word adequate. I think the fact that Kendrick Park and West Cemetery exist in the immediate proximity of the, of the project allows me at least to, to feel that what is adequate is much less than a project that didn't have those amenities in the immediate vicinity. So I feel like what's been proposed is adequate, partly because, yeah, it's a downtown, you know, apartment building and doesn't really, or mixed-use building, and doesn't really need a lot of open space. But, you know, rather than sort of basing the conclusion that everything is adequate off of those, I'd just say, because those exist, we, we felt that the minimum adequacy was less than in a situation where they didn't exist.
I would prefer just keying off what they're actually providing, which is, I think there's, there's an exercise room, there's a probably too small plaza, and there could be, there's, there is green space on site that can be used. I mean, I think you could talk about One East Pleasant Street and Kendrick Place, but I think that one of the problems with those buildings is those people have no green space. They have no place to go outside, and you can't wander around Amherst Parks all night. You know, you get thrown out. You can't have a beer in one, you know.
So what am I going to do here? Rework this?
I would just, I would just refer to what they're actually providing, you know, and we could say that's adequate, you know. That, that's my suggestion. So I don't, you don't have to beat this home right now, I guess.
I can put the, what Doug said and what Janet said together and come up with something. Not, not right now, but I will do that. And when I send out the decisions, people can write back to me and tell me if they agree with what I've said.
Sounds fair, Chris. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want me to, to read this? Or you, how are you doing with your voice and?
I think I can get through this one and then read the next one.
Okay.
Let's see, let's see. We were on unique or an important natural features.
Yes.
Went 2410. Unique or important natural, historic, or scenic features will be protected. Although a line of existing trees will be removed as part of the building project, the Historical West Cemetery, which lies to the east of the proposed building, will be protected with a relocated fence to be located along the property line and a row or rows of new trees planted along the property line with the cemetery. The Historical Commission has reviewed this project with respect to protecting the West Cemetery and has made recommendations which have been forwarded to the planning board members. 11.2411. The project provides adequate methods of refuse disposal as described in the management plan. 11.2412. The project will be connected to town sewer and water. The town engineer has reviewed the proposed plans and has issued a letter of comment dated April 30th, 2021. A condition of the site plan review approval will, will require that the project comply with the town engineer's comments and recommendations outlined in his letter. 11.2413. The proposed drainage system within and adjacent to the site will be adequate to handle the stormwater. The town engineer has reviewed the project and has issued a letter with comments and recommendations. Condition of the site plan review approval will require that the project comply with the town engineer's comments and recommendations outlined in his letter of April 30th, 2021. 11.2414. Provision of adequate landscaping has been addressed. The project includes new plantings on site as well as proposed new plantings in the town right-of-way. 11.241-
Do, do we feel that? Do we have like a landscape plan that we, we think is adequate? Or will that come later? Because I think there's been a lot of discussion about the antics. And whether, you know, that ties into the setback on the west side and the front and stuff like that. So is this just generic language and we can address, I mean, I don't even feel like I have a landscape plan. Maybe I'm wrong.
You did have it. You saw, you were using it yesterday when we were at our site visit. So why doesn't Kyle bring up the landscape plan and the board can look at that?
So, so are we accepting that landscape plan, or can we address that later? Do you know what I'm saying?
Why don't you address it now?
Okay, so I just wondered if people, I, I didn't get the feeling, I didn't get the definite impression the board thought that that front space worked. And then the idea of the set, having trees along the west setback, having a 10-foot setback with trees and plantings, which I think actually is a requirement of the bylaw, when you have residential properties adjacent to non-residential, there should be a vegetative buffer. So I didn't feel like those things were addressed. But I don't know if we should, do you know what I mean? Like, are we doing that here or later, or?
Well, that's one of the reasons for going through these criteria is to figure out what you want to do. So why don't you talk about it now?
I just did, I mean, yeah.
Janet, remember to raise your hand, just, if you don't mind. Thank you. Tom, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that the, the landscape plan as provided is sufficient and demonstrates what's happening at the street. It demonstrates clearly what's happening along the south facade, all the way around to the west facade, and the intent for those plantings to be also then negotiated with the town, I guess, tree expert, resident tree expert, forgetting his name. So I mean, I think we've seen those things represented clearly in the last round of plan drawings, as well as in the renderings, and they've been updated. So I feel pretty confident that the, the plantings as presented are sufficient and, and do what they were intended to do.
Thanks, Tom. Maria?
I agree with Tom with the addition of maybe like a couple of other board members suggested we increase the sidewalk by two feet to the west. But otherwise, yeah, I feel like the landscape plan was very sufficient.
All right, thank you. Janet?
You know, I think I misspoke. I meant a 10-foot setback on the north side, and that would be where plantings would go, like trees, which I think is a requirement of the bylaw, and then also would help break up the building, which, or soften the building in the words of the DRB. So that was, that's, I think I had the wrong direction for that.
Can you point, excuse me, may I raise my hand?
Yes, Chris.
Janet, can you point to the exact location in the bylaw where it talks about the screening that's required?
It might, it might take me a little bit, but I just, um-
I'm looking for it, and I'm-
I, I just read this.
Seeing it, but I don't see it.
Yeah, it's not on the top of my head.
Well, but we've had a couple of members, I think, in, you know, general agreement with what's written here, so maybe we can just move on, Chris.
Well, I also wanted to point out that Section 7.9 of the, of this, of the section on parking, which is, I think, where this is, talks about things that may be waived. So I'm not, if it's in the parking section, it can be waived. If it's elsewhere, you can look at that. If Janet can find out where we're exactly.
Oh God, I'm sorry. I don't remember where it was designed, maybe 7.1, two cars. Why don't, why don't we move on and we'll search, and if we can't find it tonight, save it for another later, I guess. I'll look, design.
11.2415. The soil erosion control methods are considered adequate to control soil erosion both during and after construction. The town engineer has not expressed concerns about soil erosion. 11.2416. Adjacent properties will be protected by minimizing the intrusion of various nuisances. A construction logistics plan is required to be submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit. 11.2417. Adjacent properties will be protected from the intrusion of lighting because a condition of the permit requires that exterior lighting be downcast and/or shielded and not shine onto adjacent properties. 11.2418 is not applicable because the property is not located in a flood-prone conservancy district. 11.2419 is not applicable because there are no wetlands on or within 100 feet of the property. 11.2420. The planning board did not choose to refer to the design principles and standards set forth in Section 3.3040 and 3.2041 of the zoning bylaw, because the project is within the jurisdiction of the design review board, and the DRB has reviewed the project and has issued comments and recommendations. The development is reasonably consistent with respect to setbacks, placement of parking, landscaping, and entrances and exits with surrounding buildings and development. The applicant has applied for a special permit to modify the side setback under footnote A of Table 3, and has applied for a special permit to allow a 10-foot setback rather than 20-foot setback on the eastern side of the site under Sections 6.141 and 9.22 of the zoning bylaw. No parking is proposed on the site. 11.2422. Building sites shall avoid, to the extent feasible, the impact on steep slopes, floodplains, scenic views, grade changes, and wetlands. There are no steep slopes or floodplains on the site. There are no severe grade changes proposed. There are no wetlands on or near the property. There are no scenic views on the property, but the applicant has met with the Historical Commission to obtain recommendations as to how to minimize the impact of the project on the Historic West Cemetery. 11.2423 is not applicable because there's only one building proposed for the site. 11.2424. Screening has been provided as appropriate. All trash and maintenance equipment will be stored within the building, and there's no loading area. 11.2430. The site has been designed to provide for the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement, both within the site and in relation to adjoining ways and properties. The access easement to the north of the property will remain open to allow unencumbered access to the adjacent bank and its drive-up window. There will be no vehicles entering the site itself, other than during construction. Pedestrian movement will be provided along the north side of the building via a five-foot walkway, along the south side of the building via a sidewalk that varies in width, and along the west side of the building via a sidewalk on private property, as well as proposed improvements in the public way. 11.2431. The location and number of curb cuts will be such as to minimize turning movements and hazardous exits and entrances. There will be only one curb cut, which will be on the adjacent property to the north, leading to an existing access easement. The curb cut will be a widened and improved version of the existing curb cut in that location. The other existing curb cut at the south side of the property will be eliminated, and no vehicles will enter the site. 11.2432 is not applicable. There will be no parking spaces on the site. Tenant bicycle parking will be accommodated in the building. Public bicycle parking is proposed to be accommodated in front of the building in an improved area of the public way. There are no loading areas located on the site, and access to the easement will remain open.
So Chris, let's do applause here. Janet, and then Doug, and their hands up. And their hands up.
I'm, I'm, so jumping back to, I was wondering if anyone on the board thought that the five-foot walkway on the north side of the building with the balliards was sufficient because I, I still think that's very tight and I, I I've seen people kind of, I mean, it's tight, super tight on one of these Pleasant Street. And it's not even with a crummy six-foot, you know, Amherst sidewalk. So I, I, I wonder if other people would agree with that.
Um, what's the width of the sidewalk on, on the, uh, on the south side too, I guess?
I think that's more like ten feet.
Ten feet, okay. All right. So I see that as an alternative, but um, uh, we have Johanna, Doug, and then Andrew.
Thanks. When I think about that north side, I, I think back to Maria's comments where we don't really, we don't know what's gonna come next to the building. Um, it's kind of, it's still a little bit of an empty canvas. I mean, for now, there's that easement and there's the bank, but I would be surprised if that's what it looks like twenty years from now. So, um, you know, I think the master plan would encourage us, I think, to do more dense development there. And so I'm, you know, I'm not wildly concerned about what that sidewalk or the setbacks look like because I think it'll be the next project where that gets kind of, I don't know, looked at and, you know, like a vision for that northern part really starts to come to life.
Yeah, so it's work in progress there. Uh, Doug and then Andrew.
Yeah, I guess um, as long as that easement is there, I guess I'm okay with the five-foot dimension. Um, and when the next project comes, I, I guess I have to assume that the uh, the solution for the next project will keep any windows in the next project from being five feet away from the windows in this project so that, you know, the uh, owner of this project doesn't have to sue the next project to have units that are rentable. Because otherwise, you know, you don't want to see somebody five feet away from you in the next window. So um, I guess that, I kind of agree with Johanna that that's all to be worked out later. And as long as that easement is there, we've got about seventeen feet plus five feet, so twenty-two feet of clearance.
Um, so Chris or Rob, that has that easement, the language there, you know, it's been checked out and confirmed?
You have the language. It was presented to you um, in a previous meeting. So we have, we have the language.
And you're happy with it?
I, I didn't see a problem with it.
Okay. All right, uh, Andrew, did you have your hand up?
Um, I, I put it down. I, I was comfortable with the five feet as well. I think with the easement, I think we're, we're good.
All right, thank you. Uh, so Chris.
We have a few more things, right?
Yeah.
Uh, so we were on eleven point two four three two. I think we got finished with that. Eleven point two four three three provision for access to adjoining properties is not an issue. The access easement on the adjacent property to the north will remain open. There is also a little bit of a pedestrian access between eleven East Pleasant and, and one East Pleasant, if you wanted me to mention that. It's not handicapped accessible, but there is handicapped access if you go out onto the um, sidewalk and then back around. So I don't know if that's worth mentioning.
Um, Chris, I'm sorry, I found it and I, I have a question about it. So um, these, the screening of residential um, things, it's, it's actually in um, the site plan review criteria and it says it's eleven point two four one four. And it says provision of adequate landscaping, including the screening of adjacent residential uses, provision of street trees, blah, blah, blah. When a non-residential use joins a residential district, an uninterrupted, oh, I actually think I'm getting it wrong. An uninterrupted vegetative buffer shall to the extent be established and maintained between buildings associated with the uses. So.
To joining and none.
Yeah, I'm wondering if that's, I, I think I read that as saying that all residential buildings should be screened, but I, I think the non-residential joins a residential district.
So this is considered.
That would be on the property with the non-residential use, right? It wouldn't be on the residential use property. Is that right?
Well, mixed-use building is considered um, a residential use.
Okay.
For this residential use. I think this is, puts the onus on a non-residential use.
I think so too, now that I'm reading it.
It's a residential district. Then the non-residential use has to provide a buffer against the residential use.
Okay, I think I see that too. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, okay, eleven point two four one six. Adjacent properties will be protected by minimizing the intrusion of various nuisances. But, oh, I, I'm sorry, I'm back on the other page. Nope. Uh, let's see, eleven point two four three four. Um, not applicable. There's no new driveway proposed for this project. The existing access easement on the adjacent property to the north will remain open. Um, eleven point two four three five is not applicable. Joint access driveways between adjoining properties is not an issue since the adjacent property has an existing access easement which will remain open. Eleven point two four three six. The requirement for submission of a traffic impact statement is requested to be waived. And there is no traffic expected to enter the site. Eleven point two four three seven is not applicable because no traffic impact report will be required. Now, the developer did present a traffic impact report um, during the first go-round when he was expecting um, traffic to enter the site. So if you wanted to look back to that, you could do so, but um, that would probably be in your packets from, oh, I'm gonna say May fifth. But in this case, I don't think that's applicable because there won't be any traffic entering the site. So what do we think?
Yeah. Seems like on target there, um, most part, um.
Okay, so we had a problem with eleven point two four oh three and I was gonna combine what Johanna said with what Doug said and create some uh, language to that effect. Okay. All right. So that is the findings for the site plan review for eleven and thirteen East Pleasant Street. Now, um, Jack could read the findings for fifteen East Pleasant Street, which is the construction project.
Okay.
Construction site, uh, access and storage. And do you have that in your packet, Jack?
I do. I have it right here. It's like a half a page, correct?
Yeah.
All right.
Jack.
Yes.
I submit, um, sorry to cut you off, but the um, did we get the uh, the sidewalk width? I know I, I heard Maria mention it, but I'm not sure whether that was captured. From six to eight feet.
Where's, where's it sixteen feet?
No, from six, from six to eight.
Sixteen, eight, yes, we did.
You did. Okay, thanks. Sorry, I lost track.
All right. So Pam, help me out if there's any hands up here. Um, but this should be short. Um, so um, again, these are draft findings for Archipelago, thingy's Pleasant Street. Um, the board found in Article Five, accessory uses, section five point zero, so general of the zoning bylaw as follows. The site plan review application was filed under section five point zero of the zoning bylaw as an accessory used to the construction of a mixed-use building on the adjacent lot on, uh, at eleven and thirteen East Pleasant Street. The accessory use is found to be customary and incidental to the permitted principal use of a mixed-use building in that it will provide a place for access to the site, temporary storage and laydown of construction equipment and materials and a location for a construction trailer and limited parking for contractors during the course of construction of the principal use. This accessory use is found to be located on a lot adjacent to that of the principal use in the same ownership. This accessory use is found to be not detrimental to the neighborhood or the property in the vicinity. The principal use that of a mixed-use building is allowed by site plan review under Article Three, Use Regulations, Section three point three two five, mixed-use buildings of the zoning bylaw. Therefore, the accessory use may be reviewed under a site plan review application. So there's that. And then there's a special permits one?
Special permit findings and I am not finding it in my packet. Maybe Pam could bring it up.
Chris, which one are we looking for? Just for the special permits?
Looking for the special permit findings.
Okay, here they are.
Shall I go ahead and read them, Jack?
Yeah, I, I have it up as well, but if you want to go, that's, that's fine.
I can read half of them and you could read half of them. So for special permit number twenty twenty-one dash oh two, which is a request of a, for a special permit to modify dimensional requirements for height, side and rear setback under footnote A of table three, section six of the zoning bylaw. The board found under Article Six, Table Three, footnote A as follows. For height, that the new building is proposed to be fifty-seven feet in height, that Article Six, Table Three, Dimensional Regulations limits the height of buildings in the general business district to fifty-five feet. That footnote A authorizes the special permit of granting authority to grant a special permit to modify the height requirement if it applies for the, if it applies the criteria established in section ten point three nine five of the zoning bylaw and considers the proposed modified dimensional requirement in the context of the patterns of the same dimensions established by existing buildings and landscape features in the surrounding neighborhood which have a functional or visual relationship to the proposed building. That the nearby buildings at fifty-seven East Pleasant Street, which is Kendrick Place, which is fifty-six feet, ten inches in height, and at one East Pleasant Street, which is eight, sixty feet in height, both exceed the fifty-five foot height limitation in the dimensional regulations. That the design review board has reviewed the proposed building and has applied its standards and conditions in Article Three, Sections three point two oh four oh and three point two oh four one of the zoning bylaw, one through nine, to evaluate the design of the proposed architecture and landscape alterations and that the DRB has recommended approval of the proposed building.
Could I, could I jump in?
Hmm.
I just, I never understand this and I, I've heard people say this over and over again. So the, the chair of the design re, review board said this thing will, this building sticks out like a sore thumb. And so here's my question. Why are we only looking at the heights to the tallest buildings in the area? Because there's a lot of one-story buildings and two-story buildings. And so when I look at ten point three nine five, it talks about not creating disharmony with respect to the terrain and to the use scale and architecture of existing buildings in the vicinity which have a functional or visual relationship to there too. And so we have the Greenfield, Greenfield thing, Bank Building, we have the Jones Buildings, we have everything across the street. And so, you know, you may think that's harmonious, but I think we should also list their heights too and not pretend they don't exist. Um, and then there's the, but I think of the Virtus Cheese Building, but it's gonna be a Mexican restaurant. So there's a lot of very low buildings nearby. The toy shop buildings, they're a little bit high because they're high in the street. So I would, I would love to just put in the surrounding buildings, not just the tallest ones we can find. And I, I don't know if people would object to that, but I just think, let's just be, you know, factually accurate about what's around us. So that's, that would be my add to that. I, I, yeah, people have mentioned to this me over and over again. We're sort of cherry picking, you know, downtown and, and ignoring the whole, the whole gas law or something, so.
May I say something?
Sure.
So the, the zoning bylaw allows the height to be fifty-five feet in this area. And that does not necessarily comport with one and two-story buildings that are around it. I think the intention is that this area be developed with taller buildings. So to, you know, compare what's being proposed to a one or a two-story building is, you know, not really looking towards the future. So that's, that's just all I have to say about that. But I will certainly list the heights of um, some of these smaller surrounding buildings. If that's what the board like, would like me to do.
Well, it seems like we can get into mucho, like there's, there, uh, there's parking lots, which, you know, and which it's not, you know, uh, I'm not sure it's adding value.
No parking lot is creating harmony. But I think, to be honest, what's there? You know, and if you feel like that's harmonious, then stand behind it, but not to, I think we should say those buildings are there.
Okay. And that would be added to paragraph four. All right, um, number six, that the proposed height of fifty-seven feet does not create disharmony with respect to the terrain and to the use scale and architecture of existing buildings in the vicinity which have functional or visual relationships. Okay?
Okay.
Um, you want me to go uh, further than that? Shall I read side setback also?
I'll give you a little break. I'll do that.
Okay.
All right, uh, side setback, north side. That the new building setback from the northern property line is proposed to be five feet. That Article Six, Table Three, Dimensional Regulations requires a side setback of ten feet of a side setback is provided. That Article Six, Section six point one three two states that in general business, BG neighborhood business, BN and light industrial LI districts, minimum side yards shall be at least twenty feet when adjoining a residence district. Otherwise, side yards are not required, but if provided, shall be at least ten feet. That the side setback on the north side does not adjoin a residence district and therefore is uh, required to be either zero or ten feet. That footnote A authorizes special permitting grant authority to grant a special permit to modify the side setback requirement in the BG's district if it applies uh, the criteria established in section ten point three nine five of the zoning bylaw and considers the proposed modified dimensional requirement in the context of the patterns of the same dimensions established by existing buildings and landscape features in the surrounding neighborhood which have a functional or visual relationship to the proposed building. All right, um, that the design review board has reviewed the proposed building and has applied its standards and conditions in Article Three, Sessions three point two zero four zero and three point two zero four one of the zoning bylaw, one through nine, to evaluate the design of the proposed architecture and landscape alterations and that the design root board has recommended approval of the proposed building. The side setbacks in the BG district vary. Some examples of side setbacks in the vicinity of the proposed buildings are forty-three, thirty-seven East Pleasant Street, the spoke, uh, has a size, side, south side, uh, uh, this is a tongue twister. Okay, south side setback appears to overlap property line. Fifteen East Pleasant Street, the pub, former um, north side setback appears to be four feet. Eleven and thirteen East Pleasant Street, the mercantile building, former, uh, has a north side setback, uh, appears to be six, appears to be zero feet. One twenty-one North Pleasant Street, which is a Unitarian Universalist church, uh, south side setback, original building appears to be seven feet. New section appears to have zero setback north and south sides. One oh three North Pleasant Street, uh, which is where Panda East is and Menbar's and other things, um, Peter Pocket, my favorite, um, south side setback appears to be three feet. That the proposed setback of five feet does not create disharmony with respect to the train and to the use scale and architecture of existing buildings in the vicinity which have function or visual relationships there too. Um, the request to modify the rear setback under footnote A has been replaced by the following requests.
Want me to read? Shall I, shall I read now?
Okay.
Okay. Special permit twenty twenty-one dash oh three. Request a special permit for a non-conforming building to be structurally altered, enlarged or reconstructed under section nine point two two of the zoning bylaw for a mixed-use building proposed under section three point three two five of the zoning bylaw. The board found under Article Nine, Non-Conforming Lots, Uses and Structures, Section nine- The board found under Article nine, nonconforming lots, uses and structures, Section nine point two two as follows. That the existing building at eleven and thirteen East Pleasant Street, formerly the Mercantile Cousins Market and Airwaves is closer to the rear property line with the cemetery than allowed by the zoning bylaw. That the existing building at eleven and thirteen East Pleasant Street abuts the rear property line in its closest point at one foot and seven feet closer than the allowed twenty feet. At Section six point one four one of the zoning bylaw states that the general business district where the property is located, the minimum rear yard shall be at least twenty feet when adjoining a residence district. That the property at eleven and thirteen East Pleasant abuts the general residence district RG at its eastern end and that the property that it abuts is the West Cemetery. That the existing building at eleven and thirteen East Pleasant Street is one story tall. That the proposed building will be five stories tall. That the proposed building is proposed to be set back from the rear property line by ten feet. Can you? Can Pam scroll this up a bit? Thank you. That the historical commission in its memo dated June twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, expressed a strong preference for a minimum of a ten foot setback and could support a twenty foot setback. That the historical commission recommended other work to ameliorate the impact of the new building on the West Cemetery, including relocation of the fence and new tree planting. That the alteration enlargement or reconstruction of the existing building at eleven and thirteen East Pleasant Street, formerly the Mercantile Cousins Market and Airwaves to create the proposed mixed use building is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming building.
Thank you, Chris.
I think that does it for findings. Now we have conditions.
Okay.
We have two sets of conditions, one for the new building and the other one is for the the site that's going to be the construction.
Yes.
So you want to read some of the new building conditions, Jack?
Well, I have, I have a fifth file. And it says this possible draft conditions that you sent. But it doesn't say, you know, location. I'm wondering if it's.
That's the one for eleven and thirteen East Pleasant, but I think it's actually been superseded by a new list. Which Rob Moore had to this, the new list.
Oh, yeah, this, so that's seven twenty three. So that's old, that's old.
No, that's actually new. That's fine.
Okay.
From that, yeah. That's a good one. Oh, but except, wait a minute. This is a new one that was just reviewed by Nate Malloy at about four thirty this afternoon, and he added a few things about affordable housing because Nate is our housing expert. So this is exactly the right list to read from. Thank you.
Um, so I'm not sure I have the right version then.
Well, but Jack, I'm sharing my screen. Can you see it?
Oh, okay, I'll just. Let me. Bump it up a little bit.
So we have a document, this is a new document? I'm sorry, confused.
Yeah. I don't think this has been emailed yet, right, Chris? You're on mute.
This came in very late in the day. I asked Nate to take a look at the specific find as conditions related to affordable housing and he's done that. Otherwise, everything is exactly the same as what you have in your packet. So we can go through Nate's changes when we get to them because he's done them and tracked changes.
Okay. Andrew, you're good?
I think the track change, yeah, I just wanted to see what had actually changed.
Okay. All right. So these are the draft proposed conditions for eleven and thirteen East Pleasant Street. Number one, development shall be built substantially in accordance with the plans submitted to planning board approved on. And number two, development shall be managed substantially in accordance with the management plan submitted to the planning board approved on. Three, upon a change of ownership at the property is no longer managed by Archipelago Investments. LLC, the new owner and or manager shall submit a new management plan to the planning board at a public meeting for its review and approval. The purpose of the meeting shall be for the board to determine whether conditions of the permit are being complied with and whether any modification to the site plan review approval or management plan is required. So Janet, you have your hand up.
Um, I'm, I'm not, do we have a specific management plan other than the application report, like the original application?
You received a management plan the application probably back. When would that have been? It would have been in before the June thirtieth.
Oh, second.
Okay.
Before the June second meeting, that's right. That might have received another one before the June thirtieth meeting.
So it looks like we want to renumber these because I'm jumping from three to five here, but.
Oh.
Yeah. So no problem. Changes to the project and or substantial changes to any approved site plan or to the exterior of the building shall be submitted to the planning board for his review and approval prior to the work taking place. The purpose of this middle shall be for the planning board to approve the change and to determine whether the changes are de minimis or significant enough to require modification of the special permit or site plan review approval.
Jack, I would like, I would like to point out that Kyle has.
Okay.
Just a quick question on, yeah, as it's listed five. The, the determination, Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, of de minimis or non de minimis precedes that through the building commissioner?
Building brings things to the planning board when he thinks that they need to be looked at by the planning board. If they're really insubstantial, then he can make changes. Then he can approve changes, but he often brings what are considered to be relatively minor and could be construed to be de minimis by the planning board, but he gives the planning board the chance to make that determination.
And I would only seek to define the first word in number five as changes because that could be a change in nail versus a change the color of the building. So is there a way to define changes so that it's not?
Substantial changes to the project then, I guess, huh?
Yeah, the word substantial.
Yeah.
Is Rob Morris still here?
Yep. Yeah. So I don't see any issue with that proposed change. The bylaw does allow for, the bylaw calls it a minor change as an administrative approval to a previously issued site plan. And that's usually what I'm looking at first. And then this condition would be reviewed for the board to decide whether or not the change was large enough to require modification of the permit or something they could just review and approve or reject in a public meeting setting.
Andrew?
Yeah, dumb question. I probably missed this earlier, but this is all in regards to like the ninety unit plan, right? Not the original.
Yes.
Fifty odd units. Okay. Thank you.
All right. So number six landscaping shall be installed in accord.
What, sorry, Jack, just one more question. Our management and for this is for number three. Our management entity is Amherst Innovative Living. So maybe it says Archipelago Investments LLC or affiliates.
So you, the board received the management plan on, for the June thirtieth meeting. When you change to your ninety unit building. So they do have the management plan and if they still have their packets from June thirtieth, it's in there, but it's pretty much boilerplate.
I'm just, it's, it's insignificant, Chris. I probably don't need to bring it up. It's just a, it's, it's our management entity.
Can you start with it again?
Amherst Innovative Living. Oh, I'll see.
Would the board like me to put that name in this condition?
Sounds appropriate. There's a paper trail.
Okay, I will do that. Okay.
Okay, number six landscaping shall be installed in accordance with landscape plan prior to the issuance of the certificates of occupancy. And once installed, shall be continually maintained. All disturbed areas shall be loaned and ceded unless otherwise specified. I think continually maintained kind of sounds like someone's going to be out there as needed, maybe maintained as needed.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, okay. All right, no mind. Seven, if the pending zoning bylaw amendment as amended with the publication data seven, six, twenty twenty one and seven fourteen twenty twenty one and referred by the town council on seven twenty eight twenty one regarding mixed use buildings is adopted unless the bylaw provisions do not apply in accordance with GL Chapter forty eight, Section six. The applicant shall submit to the planning board a site plan review amendment application along with updated plans and document for review and approval of any changes necessary to satisfy the requirements of the new bylaw provisions prior divisions of of any building permit. So you strike the the there. So that's, this is an interesting one. Doug? Or Chris first?
Yeah, I assume that we will, Chris could explain what this means and maybe I'm thinking of that news she gave us at the last meeting about the submission of a subdivision application.
Yes. Chris?
So the board and, and CRC and Town Council are still working on zoning amendments and one of them is for mixed use buildings. And we have not hit on final language yet. The board will be. The board had a public hearing and it will be deliberating and voting at some point in the future. And we don't know exactly what that is going to end up as. So we're putting in this language because we're saying it's possible that this project may need to comply with that new zoning amendment that was advertised on these two dates. On the other hand, the applicant has submitted a preliminary subdivision plan, which if he follows through and submits a definitive subdivision plan would give him protection from changes to the zoning bylaw. So the board has not heard anything about this preliminary subdivision plan yet and you haven't held the public hearing or anything about that. So we don't really know how that's going to transpire or have an impact on this project. So we wanted to cover all of our bases and say if the project has to change as a result of the mixed use building bylaw coming through, then the applicant needs to come back to the board to get approval for the changes. On the other hand, there may be a chance that he doesn't need to comply and that what he's showing on his plan is what he's going to be permitted to build and then he wouldn't need to come back. So that's what this is all about. And I.
Janet?
So this is off my very tired head. So this is a half acre lot. Is it possible, physically possible to have a subdivision and a a road around it? I mean, can you submit a subdivision plan on something that you actually can't ever build under the code? Is that just, or is that a question for another day?
That's a question for another day, but there is another property included in the subdivision. So it's not just the property that's being considered for the building. It's also the property that is directly to the north of it and there may be something else involved as well, but.
Okay, I'm just wondering. Okay.
So what's the drop dead date for bylaws being, you know, approved subsequent to the you know, initial you know, beginning of the hearing, is it, is it the building permit sort of or?
No, it really has to do with the publication date of the of the zoning amendment, when the zoning amendment public hearing, the planning board public hearing for the zoning amendment is advertised, that's the date when the applicant needs to comply with the new zoning amendment if it were to be adopted. And we don't know if it's going to be adopted and we don't know if it's going to be adopted in exactly the form that you saw it at the public hearing. So this, this condition is trying to embrace all of the possibilities. But if the applicant is going to be required to comply with a mixed use building standard that is different from what he's showing on his plan, then we want him to come back and show it to you and get approved for it.
All right, Kyle?
Just quickly, I think the one thing that is left out is if this project meets that zoning bylaw amendment.
Yep.
Right. So I think I would, if we could have language in there that says if that's the case, then then it meets the zoning bylaw amendment and we obviously wouldn't have to come back for the planning board.
Okay, what number is this? This is number?
Seven.
Seven. Okay, we can put such language in. Yep.
Please, thank you.
Um. So we're on number eight. The building should meet all required energy efficiency codes and the regulations of the stretch energy code. In addition, low flow plumbing fixtures shall be installed throughout the project. Next, the site plan review approval shall expire within two years of the date that is filed with the town clerk unless has been both recorded that the registry of deeds and substantial construction or use has commenced within the two year time period. Number ten, construction shall be completed within twenty four months from the date of issuance of the building permit. If more time is needed, the applicant shall come before the planning board at a public meeting for a review and approval of an extension of time.
Jack?
Yes.
Doug and Kyle both have their hands raised.
Okay, Doug?
Yeah, I was curious whether the stretch energy code applies to this project. I, I guess I, I thought that that was for projects permitted as a residential, under the residential state code. And if this is permitted under the commercial code, I'm not sure it applies.
That would be a question for Rob Mora. Is he still here?
Uh, yes. So Doug, the, the stretch energy code does apply to these buildings for the residential units and are subject to the performance testing and hers rating and all that comes along with the stretch energy code.
Thank you, Rob. Kyle?
Uh, I'd like to request thirty months instead of twenty four months on number ten, please.
Any objections?
To handle winters on either end a bit better.
Does the board, does the board agree with that?
Yeah, I don't see any objections. Andrew, Janet, Andrew?
I, I'm supportive of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Janet?
So I've only seen twenty four months and so they're saying is that you have to substantial, you know, it's like you have to really get into the project. And so I don't, I've seen that over and over and over again in Amherst and it seems like there has to be a reason for that.
So the twenty four months usually relates to how long the site plan review or the special permit is good for unless you start construction. But if you start construction, normally we don't put a limit on how long construction can take. For some reason, we have recently decided it's a good idea to put that limitation on. So we don't have projects that go on and on forever. So that's what this is about, but usually the twenty four months relates to how long you have for your site plan review or your special permit before you start construction.
So, so there is, so the reason for the twenty four minutes completion is making sure it gets done. Is that, is that what you're saying?
That's right.
Okay.
So project use residential, the total number of dwelling units to be constructed, the project shall be limited to a maximum of ninety units, thirty studios, thirty six one bedrooms and twenty four two bedrooms. The building shall not exceed a maximum of, oh. Are those residual hands up or?
Oh, sorry. Yes, sorry.
And Andrew?
Mine wasn't, I'm just, I'm trying to remember whether it mentions the affordable units elsewhere in here. And if not, should we have it in line eleven?
Yes, it does.
It does further down. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Um, the bill. Um, the building should not exceed a maximum of five stories and a total of fifty seven feet measured from. Average finished grade on the street side of the building to the highest point of the flat roof excluding any. How do you say that word? Parapet or other rooftop equipment as outlined in section six point one seven, the zoning by law. Thirteen, the principal use. Shall remain mixed use building and shall not be changed to any other residential use, including private dormitory. Fourteen, the property shall not be used for temporary, no less than twelve months, short term housing. Short term lodging or advertise as such in print or electronically. Apartments shall meet all applicable A A B, A, the ADA requirements within. With five percent of the total units being fully accessible and all units visitable. I don't know if you want to scooch up.
Scroll down, Pam.
I will, yes.
Do we wanna, I'm sorry to check, you mind if I, do we want to require that the accessible units be on the first floor? Because that was a point.
Yes.
Or that the first floor units be accessible. I don't know if they.
I I don't think that's. I think that the units that are designed on the first floor now are primarily studios. And I think there might be one two bedroom unit at the far end. So I don't know if that's a reasonable thing to request because. There may be other more luxurious apartments up above that would be suitable for. ADA units.
I just thought the whole point was that people who are. With disabilities prefer the first floor or people using wheelchairs. So it it seems like it should be good that those units can provide them. With units on the first floor.
The building would need to be, excuse me, I'm sorry, I should go raise my hand.
Yes, Chris.
The building would need to be reconfigured in order to accommodate that. So I don't know if that's something that you want to. Require now. We have heard that. People with disabilities prefer to live on the first floor, but there is an elevator in the building to provide access to other units.
I'm gonna jump to Kyle and then Andrew and Doug.
Uh, thank you. Relative to the apartments on the first floor, there's six apartments. There's eleven affordable units. Our intent was not to make those six all affordable. The intent was to. As we'll discuss later on in this, you know, spread those out throughout the building. As it relates to the number fifteen. The five percent of total units being fully accessible and all units visitable. Those are building code requirements. I'd prefer if the building code ran it rather than a condition. If the building code. And that may be fine and I would defer to Rob more on that, but I I wouldn't want a condition and a building code to conflict. On something like that. And the last was number thirteen. The language that says including a private dormitory. I think a private dormitory is defined in our by law and I don't think there's any opportunity for this to be one. So I don't think that needs to be required. Or included.
Okay. Andrew and then Doug.
Thanks, Jack. Yeah, I I I wonder if there is some. What if if fifteen said like including? Or it just had some reference to some. Units on the ground floor. I know there's varying degrees of disability and for some folks, they may not necessarily care what floor they're on, but. We did hear it. I think it would be, I think it would be worthwhile to put in here to say that, you know, at least some of them. Are on the ground floor. I, so that's, that's, that's kind of piling on what Jan was saying. I was also, and again, if this is in here later as well. Would? Any of the fully accessible units? Be part of the. Uh, oh my gosh, too late. The. The, the affordable house, sorry.
It may be.
It may, I mean, right now it could or couldn't be, right?
It could, could be or it couldn't be. Depends on who needs the units.
So I guess in the same, same side, this is, this is just a question for the the board is would we want something in here that would indicate that? There needs to be at least one unit. That is both affordable and fully accessible. And that number could be whatever, just a thought.
So Chris, your, your hands up.
What was my hand up for? Oh, my hand was up about. Having units on the ground floor. I really feel like that's maybe we should add words if you want to put that in. You should say if feasible or as, as much as possible or something like that, but I feel like it's going to be hard to. Do that in the current, the current floor plan. Maybe Rob has some language that he could offer that might make sense.
Can defer to Rob and then, and then Doug and Janet. Rob, do you have any comment on that wording?
I get, my only comment is that the, the building code doesn't really prescribe that they have to be on a particular floor. Ideally, we would like to see them offered in various locations throughout the building, just like the affordable units will be spread out. I don't know the floor plan of the first floor layout well enough to say that. It could easily be accommodated. So I think that question would have to go to Kyle if they could. Offer a unit on the first floor as a fully accessible unit.
Okay, Doug and then Janet.
Yeah, all I was gonna say was typically or often. Some of the accessibility codes require that the accommodations be distributed. Through the space or through the building. So. You know, language like that might be consistent with some of the other codes. But, you know, if if Kyle says it's not a hardship to. Specify that at least one such unit is gonna be on the first floor, then I'm, I have no objection to adding that.
Okay. Chris, is your hand up or?
Yeah, it had to do with requiring that one of the affordable units be accessible. And I think that's another question for, I don't know if Nate Malloy is still here. Let's see, is Nate here? Nate is not still here. That may be a question for Rob. Is that a reasonable thing to require? Or should they be distributed as, as to the need?
Well, I think it's reasonable to, to require it if the, you know, if the need is there, I guess, you know. What I'm guessing Nate would say is that, you know, there comes a time where the, the building operator has to fill the unit. And that, you know, depending on what the need is, we'll have, we'll address whether or not it's an accessible unit, but we have heard. I think recently through the. Disability Commission conversations about how affordable units have not been found to be accessible in. In the various apartment complexes and talking through that with Nate and others, you know, we, we felt like this is the place to deal with that. On a permit condition by the board, not in the by law. So I think it's, you know, it certainly is a valid request if the board. Thought it was appropriate.
To require that one of the units that's affordable also be accessible?
Offered as accessible, but maybe not strict language that there isn't an alternative. If there are all the affordable units are otherwise filled, you know, without a request for an accessible unit.
Maybe we could work on that language.
Okay. Thank you, Janet.
So I think that there's a, a lot was made of the fact that people in wheelchairs. Or have other accessibility issues really like to be on the first floor and now we're whittling it down to one unit on the first floor. So I find that a little hard to take partly because my parents were both, are both handicapped and so it seems like. It seems almost like you're using that as a justification for something you wanted. So I'd like to see. An effort towards universal design if somebody's blind. Or, you know, in a, in a wheelchair and they're gonna feel more comfortable on the first floor. I think they'd like to have more than one possible unit. And so I, you know, I think we should move towards inclusiveness and the needs of, of. People with disabilities and not just rhetorically. I find that a little much. So if it's, I'd like to see more than one unit on the first floor that's accessible or. Universal design. So some people will feel safer.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm not, I guess I'm not. Totally aware of the, the first floor. I mean, with the elevators being present like, like Chris said. That, that does upwind at the whole, you know, building to accessibility, but.
Do you want to look at a first floor plan?
I mean, my, my, my reading of. The way in which accessibility is, is treated and should be treated is yes, I think we do want to accommodate the first floor, but I think it's. Doug noted that distribution is actually an important part of that, that. Being relegated to a specific place is also not. Equal, right? Maybe people want a view from the third floor or the fourth floor. And also have specific ADA needs. So I think. Allowing for distribution throughout the building in whatever capacity Doug noted. Is valuable, whether we want to mandate one on the first floor, I, I, I'm not sure. But I'd, I'd rather be more inclusive in the sense that people have the option. To, to make a choice about where they want to be in the building and not be relegated to a specific place.
Comment, Tom. Did, oh, Kyle and then maybe Rob?
Sure. So the next two pages all go over all the requirements of how you place units and. And what type of units and the number of units that need to be. Studio, the number that need to be one, the number that need to be two, obviously on the ground floor, we only have a certain type of unit. We have no problem putting. An affordable unit on the ground floor. This building will be. You know, the Massachusetts A A B requirements mandate a number of these ninety apartments to be fully accessible. I have no problem allocating as many of those as we can. As the puzzle allows trying to accommodate these to be affordable. We have no problem doing that if that works, so. There are a lot of different things to juggle in terms of building code, in terms of affordable requirements, in terms of accessibility requirements. So I would just ask for, we're open to put things on, put affordable units on the ground floor. I just asked for some flexibility so we don't get caught between three, you know, one of the different, five different criteria we're trying to meet.
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah, I just wanted to read the code language really quickly here because there is a distribution requirement that. Both Doug and Tom mentioned and it's, it reads that. The unit shall be proportionally distributed across the total number of units according to the number of bedrooms, size, quality, price and location. So when it does get down to the time when we're reviewing the final layout and, you know, we'll talk later about the affordable units. And we do ask for a, a very specific plan and locating those affordable units. We'll be doing the same for the accessible units. So I think the condition as it reads, you know, adding the language that including. At least one unit on the first floor would probably work well with what we'll have to do to ensure that they are spread out appropriately to meet the code.
Thank you. So, Chris?
So are we talking about at least one affordable unit or at least one handicapped accessible unit on the first floor? Or one of each?
I believe the discussion was about accessibility.
Yeah.
Accessible unit. Oh, thank you very much.
Kyle?
I, I was gonna ask the same. Is this for an affordable unit on the ground floor or an accessible unit on the ground floor or an affordable and an accessible unit on the ground floor?
Chris?
Oh, I, that was my question. So you've answered it. That it's for accessible unit.
Doug?
And I, can I interject that I believe we were talking about article fifteen? Which is concerning accessibility. We have not gotten to the ones. To the articles about affordability yet.
Yeah.
So that would be accessible. Okay, I get it. Yep.
So this is about adding some language on article fifteen.
And sentence fifteen, which has to do with apartments should all access. Be fully accessible, including one unit on the first floor. Okay? That's right.
Okay, so number sixteen, the units of the project shall be registered and permitted in accordance with the Amherst residential Rental Property Bylaw. Loss or suspension of a rental permit shall constitute a violation of this condition. Project use, commercial retail, non-residential tenant space. Spaces, any use authorized in the commercial retail, non-residential tenant space at this project site shall be. You shall be uses allowed by right or permit permitted by the site plan or by. Special permit and then general business BG zoning district. Marketing and lease agreement, lease shall be a minimum duration of twelve months. Nineteen, Andrew?
That residential leases. Not commercial leases, I, I'm presuming. Yes, I assume that's residential leases.
I think it's supposed to be residential leases, so I should add that word.
Okay. Janet?
So one, a condition I would add is it cannot, you know, apartments cannot be released leased room by room. So I would add that, but I wonder if we can, we all seem exhausted and kind of stumbling and I see pages and pages. Is there a way we can just continue this till next week? And fit you in early. I'd be happy to meet at six, just to finish this up, but I'm, I'm completely exhausted and it seems like we're going slower and slower. And stumbling a bit. I'm, you know, we're at hour four.
Yeah, what's on our, what do we got on the docket for?
You have.
August.
Greenfield Savings Bank. That's a continuation of the public hearing. You have. A new project at Bay Road. It's a parking lot for a trailhead for Sweet Ellis Brook Trail.
Yeah.
A. The, the continuation of the public hearing about the rezoning of the lot behind CBS. So you could conceivably. Continue this to, to that date. And it would be just to, for the purposes of going over the conditions and voting. Is that correct?
Yes, Doug?
We have not closed the public hearings, right?
Right.
So you'd have to continue the public hearing to that date.
Does that require advertising or?
No, but you know what I wanted to say that. There aren't that many more. Conditions left because I was going to suggest that we not go through the construction conditions. Because we've already done that a million times and, and I think people find it tedious and they all say the same thing. So. The conduct, the construction conditions are sort of boilerplate, but. It's up to you as to whether you want to. Continue this to next week.
Okay, Kyle?
And I would also say that the great number of these are affordable units that are, you know, Nate Malloy worked in because he's the affordable. Professional. And so I, I don't imagine that we're gonna be editing elements that Nate put on when he's not on because they're. So I would, I would absolutely ask if, if we could finish this tonight, I would greatly appreciate that.
Check?
I got Maria. Maria, how you doing?
Yeah, you guys talk about tired. You don't know tired. I was hoping we could wrap up tonight because I'm not. Positive I can. positive I can make some next meeting. I will be in transit and I said to Chris, I could probably call in, but I would have to call in late. And I'm not sure when you would be voting. I definitely didn't want to miss it. So if we can just push through, what number are we on? Eighteen? And there's how many? There, oh my God, there's forty, fifty? Oh, we're not going to fifty-five. So we'd be stopping at fifty-four? Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay, I'm fine to keep going. I'll let the other board members try me, but I was, I've had so much coffee, I can keep going. So you guys decide. But I can keep going.
All right, Andrew?
I I'm okay going, although as I say that I I just respond or think about Janet's comment. I was gonna say number eighteen, how he'd said residential. As I read it again, maybe we actually don't include that residential language as a go back is I think they would probably make sense to have 12 months beyond for for residential and commercial. However, if if we feel like there is a a need to be able to do pop-ups, then then maybe we do keep it as residential. But in any situation, I'm, I would love to to power through as well because I may have limited availability in the next meeting also.
So do you want me to pick up reading, Jack?
I'm good. So we're we're nineteen?
Nineteen.
Yeah, any substantial modifications to the lease agreement which may impact tenant oversight as determined by the Building Commissioner specifically excluding minor updates such as pricing date modifications, clerical errors, or language updates required by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or other government day shall require the applicant to return to the planning board at a public meeting. Okay, so now on to affordable units. Chris, is your hand up?
No.
Okay, affordable units, at least 12% of the dwelling units, which would be 11 units, shall be and remain affordable and shall be marketed, whoops.
Sorry.
Should be marketed to eligible households whose annual income may not exceed 80% of the area median income adjusted for household size as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The affordable units and it's subject to approval by DHCD. The affordable units and the remaining units shall be eligible to be included in the town's subsidized housing inventory as main maintained by DHCD. Additionally, in accordance with Article 15 Inclusionary Zoning of the zoning bylaw, most 20% of the affordable units to shall be affordable in per in perpetuity to households earning 60% of the AMI or less. As defined by Article 12 Divisions or Definitions of the zoning bylaw, affordable housing units are units which may only be rented or purchased by families or households whose annual incomes adjusted for family size do not exceed the limits for the maximum annual income for low-income families or households. Eighty percent of the median income for Amherst as calculated by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development or any or any successor agency and are eligible and countable for the purpose of the Commonwealth's 40B subsidized housing inventory or its successor. With a total of 90 units proposed, a total of 11 units shall be affordable units as defined by Article 12 Definitions of the zoning bylaw, these affordable units shall include three studios at 80% MI, one studio at 60% AMI, one bedroom at 80% AMI, one bedroom at 60% AMI, and three bedroom, three two bedrooms at 80% AMI as listed in the management plan. If the total number of units changes, the applicant shall require, shall be required to return to the planning board for review and approval of the change, including in the chains. Including, how's that say? Including in the change in the number of affordable units.
There's something with that sentence, I think, including in the number of affordable units. If the total number of units changes, the applicant will be required to return to the planning board for review and approval of the change, including a change in the number of affordable units. So in the change to A.
Okay. Affordable units and ADA units shall not be segregated from the market rate units and in accordance with Article 15 Inclusionary Zoning of the zoning bylaw, the affordable units shall be dispersed throughout the development and shall be comparable to the market rate units in terms of quality, design, materials, and general appearance of the architecture and landscape. So there's, there's the the statement that we were prematurely addressing earlier. Twenty-three, is there a twenty-four?
Can you scroll up, Pam?
Yeah.
Not that far.
Okay.
Are we on twenty-three or twenty-four?
Twenty-four, twenty-four.
Okay, there is twenty-four, right?
Okay. The applicant shall submit a local action unit application to the DHCD under the local initiative program into into a rental regulatory agreement with the DHCD and the town and comply with all DA CD requirements. So as to ensure that affordable units will be included in the DHCD subsidized housing inventory for the town. The twenty-five, the affordable units are to remain affordable in perpetuity. Subject to the DA CD approval, this requirement shall be included in the regulatory agreement. The affordability requirement shall remain in effect in perpetuity even if the requirement is not included in the regulatory agreement or if the regulatory agreement is terminated. Twenty-six. Affordable units shall be marketed and rented to income-eligible households in accordance with the DHCD regulations and guidelines for the local initiative program. Guidelines which require their approval by DHCD of an affirmative affirmative fair housing marketing plan. The cost associated with the development and implementation of the marketing plan, including advertising and processing for the affordable units, shall be borne by the applicant. Subject to the approval of DA CD, a qualified agent shall be engaged by the applicant to administer their initial marketing and lottery for the affordable units and to maintain a waiting list for subsequent rentals in compliance with the income-eligible eligibility requirements for tenants of the affordable units. And twenty-eight, you want to move that up a little bit, Pam?
I will.
As allowed under application law. And for no more than 70% of the affordable units, the applicant shall provide a local preference category for those eligible for local preference who in the initial lease in the initial lease up lives in the community, is a municipal employee, works at a business in the community, or has children in the schools of the community or other category of local preferences as defined by the state agency providing financing. Twenty-nine, the affordable units shall be identified and exhibited to the DHCD regulatory agreement thereafter. If an affordable unit ceases to account, ceases to count as a an affordable unit due to increases in tenant income pursuant to DHCD regulations and the provisions of the regulatory agreement. The next available market rate unit with the same number of bedrooms as the affordable unit in question shall be rented as an affordable unit. The regulatory, Kyle?
Yeah, quick question on the 70% in twenty-eight. Has that been used elsewhere in Amherst, that number?
Yes.
Okay.
It's only for the first lease up.
Thank you.
Okay. Um. The regulatory agreement, number thirty, regulatory agreement shall be approved by the DHCD and recorded at Hampshire County Registry of Deeds prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy with the copy provided to the Building Commissioner. The affordable units shall be designated and shown on a floor plan provided to the planning department prior to the issuance of any building permit. Thirty-two, the affordable units shall be available and the tenant selection process shall be in in process at the time of any full or partial certificate of occupancy for completed units. However, at the discretion of the Building Commissioner, a certificate of certificate of occupancy may be issued and exclude the affordable units until the tenant selection process has been completed and inspection services has been provided, has been assuming, and inspection service has been provided documented documentation of the completed selection process. Sorry about that. The affordable unit shall be occupied at all times only by qualifying tenants in accordance with the regulatory agreement. So this next section is that construction?
We should probably go through that next section. Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
Okay, so number thirty-three, outdoor bicycle storage shall be incorporated into the site improvements that the applicant proposes proposes in the town right of way. Indoor bicycle storage shall be located inside the building in the room labeled bike as shown in the submitted plan of the first floor. The town engineer and building commissioner shall inspect the construction of the entry driveway and all on-site paved areas for conformance to town standards. All on-site utilities shall be underground. All exterior lighting shall be dark sky compliant. Exterior lighting shall be downcast, shielded, and shall not shine into adjacent properties or streets. And I think, let's see, from here, let's see. I think that these are mostly related to construction, so I think we can dispense with these. I assume that everybody has read it or read something similar in the past and is fine with them. Do you want to just sort of skim through them?
Yeah, I'm skimming.
Yep. Okay. Can I jump in here?
Yes.
So I I'm kind, I'm remembering Pam Rooney's comments about safety for people walking along Prey Street and that she wanted to have construction vehicles enter and enter and leave the site on from East East Pleasant Street, not Prey Street, since there's people walking along there. And then she also asked for like, I guess, a temporary pedestrian crossings marked from the Jones buildings to the north side of Prey Street. So people would be, you know, say, walking along the Jones buildings direction right south, and then they'll hit the construction site at fifteen East Pleasant. So they have a crosswalk to go, you know, kind of where they normally wouldn't go towards the banking and escape. And I wonder if anyone had an objection to that because both of those seem sort of sensible to me.
Kyle?
I think we've discussed these in the past. I think that our intent is to make sure that the bank tenant has as much accessibility as they possibly can. So we want to be very conscious of that. So that's why we've done the construction plan that shows coming in from Prey Street and using that spur after you come across the the sidewalk there and get into Prey Street to manage the construction coming and going from the site. So we obviously prefer to not put additional load on on the bank and try to keep that on Prey Street. We are willing to you know, accommodate if if there's the need for a temporary cross on Prey Street there, which I don't think there would be, but if there was we'd obviously be willing to work with the town on that.
So may I say something that the town is working on a project? We just got Mass DOT financing to enhance the sidewalk and the crosswalks on the north side of Prey Street. So we're hoping that most people will walk along the north side of Prey Street to get to East Pleasant Street. So we're going to be showing that plan to the town council on Monday.
Will that happen in time for this construction project, do you think?
Yes, I believe it will. It'll happen this fall.
All right, we have Maria, Andrew, and then Doug.
Thanks. I think for either number forty-six or forty-eight, it doesn't need to be written, but just to remember that we wanted to widen the sidewalk so that whatever the approved plan is or or shown plan to town council incorporates that widened two-foot sidewalk in the right of way. So, but I I don't think wording needs to be added, but just if if Kyle can alert his landscape architect.
Thank you, Maria. Andrew?
Yeah, I I think, Jenna, were you saying just like to have essentially a painted crosswalk across Prey Street just to make that more visible to folks walking by the Jones buildings? Jen?
Jen?
I I agree, I agree.
I know, I just want to make, yeah, I I would agree with that.
Fall asleep.
That's right, just, I mean, to paint a crosswalk over Prey, that's got to be pretty easy to do, whether that's something that the town does or Kyle does.
So I think what Kyle's saying is he doesn't want to put construction traffic over the easement, which is off of East Pleasant Street?
I want to limit that as much as I can to reduce the impact on the bank.
Yeah, maybe we're thinking, maybe I'm thinking of the wrong spot. I I thought you were suggesting, Janet, that it'd be sort of Prey Street, the old laundromat over towards like the spoke. Yeah, so on on Prey Street. Wouldn't impact the the easement at the bank. It would pull folks away from that and should make it easier for the bank to operate.
I have no problem painting a crosswalk if if DPW wants us to, that's fine.
Okay, Doug?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, I I kind of would defer to Rob Mora and the DPW in their review of the construction plan for for all of these kinds of things. You know, I I would imagine there's more pedestrian traffic on East Pleasant Street than there is on Prey Street. So getting the construction traffic off of East Pleasant Street might actually be more beneficial to more pedestrians, but as I said, I would, I would defer to Rob on this.
I agree. All right, any?
Any more conditions?
Yeah. That's what I was gonna ask. Okay, so we can move on to conditions for
Chris, I'm sorry, I I have one, sorry.
Okay.
Fifty-one, the management plan, Chris? I'm addressing Chris, but the board, all snow plowed within the project area shall be promptly removed from the site as part of the clearing process. I think that you know, there'll be, there will be snowbanks at some point in the winter. We're not going to just go and pick up all the snow on the site and take it off. So I don't want to imply that I'm going to be picking up snow off the site, vacuuming it up and taking it somewhere.
Trying to remember what this related to.
Yeah, the words all, that it's, that's dangerous.
Maybe there's some ameliorating language that we can put in. Where is it again?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, Pam?
I, you know what happened, Chris? I stopped sharing my screen, so I'm trying to find it. Hold on. My back on the right.
We see it.
All snow plowed within the project shall be promptly removed from the site as part of the clearing process. To the extent possible. Is there some wording we can put in there that?
I think if you got rid of all and put to the extent possible, I think that would be fine.
Okay, how about that?
Okay. Any other comments on the on the boilerplate section of this? Again, we have a copy of this that you emailed, you know, this part, I don't think has changed, so.
No. Okay, so we want to go through conditions for fifteen East Pleasant, which are shorter.
Right.
You want me to read those?
Uh.
Take turn.
Okay, yeah, why don't you start?
I'll start, okay. So this is for fifteen East Pleasant for the accessory use. Can, number one, construction staging and access plan for fifteen East Pleasant shall be built and used substantially in accordance with the plans submitted to the planning board as follows. A construction management plan prepared by SVE Associates stated March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. B, site plan prepared by SVE Associates stated April seventh, twenty twenty-one and approved on whenever you approve it. Number two, construction staging and accidents plan shall be managed substantially in accordance with the management plan submitted to the planning board and approved on whatever date you approve it. Upon a change of ownership or if the property is no longer managed by Archipelago Investments, the new owner and or manage manager shall submit a new management plan to the planning board at a public meeting for its review and approval. The purpose of the meeting shall be for the board to determine whether conditions of the permit are being complied with and whether any modification to the site plan, review, approval, or management plan is required. Number five, changes to the project and or substantial changes to any approved Number five, changes to the project and or substantial changes to any approved site plans shall be submitted to the planning board for its review and approval. Prior to the work taking place. The purpose of the submittal will be for the planning board to approve the change. And or to determine whether the changes are de minimis or significant enough. To require modification of the special permit or site plan review, in this case, it's just site plan review, sorry. For leaving in that extra word. Number six, this site plan review approval shall expire within two years of the date that it is filed with the town clerk unless it has been both reported at the registry of deeds. And substantial construction or use has commenced within the two-year time period.
Does Kyle want to move, change that to? Thirty months, like the?
Oh, this just means that he has to file his permit with the registry of deeds and start construction within that two-year period. And if he can't do that, he can come back to you to ask for an extension.
I'm fine with that, the only comment is on five, the same language of to changes as previous.
What did we say, substantial changes?
Yeah.
Okay. Number seven, within sixty days of the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for eleven and thirteen East Pleasant Street. The temporary construction staging use shall cease. The site shall be cleaned of debris, grades leveled, bituminous concrete surface and fencing installed as per plan submitted and approved. Number eight, upon completion in accordance with the final landscape and site improvements. Plan for fifteen East Pleasant, the site at fifteen East Pleasant shall not be used for parking. Or any other use prior to the applicant receiving site plan review approval or special permit approval. Site improvements, number nine, the town engineer and building commissioner shall inspect the construction of the entry driveway. And all onsite paved areas for conformance to town standards. Number ten, all onsite utilities shall be underground. Number eleven, all exterior lighting shall be dark sky compliant. Exterior lighting shall be downcast, shielded, and shall not shine onto adjacent properties or streets. Number twelve, completion of work, number twelve, the applicant shall provide asbo plans that show pavement and fencing location grades, accessways. Sidewalks, walkways, curbing, applicable stormwater management, lighting utilities to the building commissioner, town engineer, and to be placed. Within the site plan review files, so these are. From here on until sixteen is kind of boilerplate, so then we'll skip to seventeen. And seventeen is the same wording that Kyle wanted to have changed, so this seventeen, instead of saying all snow plowed, it would say snow plowed. Within the project area shall be promptly removed from the site as part of the clearing process to the extent. What did we say, to the extent feasible?
Well, and I would, I would even ask about that, I mean, this is, I I'd like to obviously have some a snowbank there, I don't want to remove it, I think if we have to plow it. I wouldn't want to have to pick that up and take it off of this site, it's different than the site next door.
So this is a staging site, so.
Yeah.
Board.
I don't want to have to.
That the snow can be remain in place on the staging site?
Just so everybody knows, snow is very difficult to move around, there's a lot of regulations about moving snow off sites, so it's not an easy thing to do.
So does it make sense to strike this number seventeen for this particular site?
That's what I'd ask for, please.
And you're the one who has to move that site.
Johanna and Doug?
I'd be comfortable with that for the site.
And Doug?
So what I?
Okay. Should be fine.
Okay. Number eighteen, all trash pickup deliveries and operation of construction maintenance machinery and landscaping. This is another thing that's all about construction, so I don't think we need to. Number nineteen is the project shall comply with and be managed in accordance. With all terms of the management plan, any alterations to this plan shall be approved by the planning board at a public meeting. If the property or business operations are sold, the new owner shall meet with the planning board at a public meeting to review the management plan. And to determine if it is still applicable and to decide whether or not to hold a public hearing to review and approve the new management plan. Number twenty, a demolition permit shall be issued prior to any demolition on the property taking place. And then the other conditions are all having to do with construction. So we've gotten through the findings and the conditions for the two site plan review applications and the two special permit applications. We still have a. A site plan review application. Hanging out there that hasn't been acted on, but perhaps the applicant will request withdrawal of that. After the board votes on the other items, so. What you would want to do now is take each item individually and close the public hearing and. Then vote as to whether you're going to approve the application. With waivers and conditions. And findings as. Listed or as reviewed.
Okay. Doug?
I was gonna make a motion to that effect. Move that we. Close the public hearings and accept the findings and conditions for the. Eleven and thirteen East Pleasant Street and fifteen East Pleasant Street as we've reviewed. And discussed this evening with the edits that. Were discussed.
Okay, and that's, and that's, that's SPP twenty twenty-one oh three. And then SPR. Twenty twenty-one oh nine, which is fifteen East Pleasant Street. And. And then SPR twenty twenty-one twelve, which is eleven and thirteen East Pleasant Street.
Are people comfortable doing that this way, or would they prefer to do perhaps the site plan review? Reviews first and then do this special permit separately? Because if you do it this way, then you're sort of asking people to vote up or down on everything.
Right, let's let's do the site plan review first, I guess. So.
So do you want to change?
So I'll, I'll withdraw my motion and let somebody else make the motion in a way that's more acceptable to you guys.
I think it would be exactly the same way that you said it, except to just list the two special permit, or the two site plan reviews.
Yeah. Just want to amend, amend that, Doug?
Sure.
Okay. We got a second, Maria?
Second.
Okay. So any further discussion and? I see none. So. We can do. A roll call, I guess, so. Maria?
Can we? I'm sorry, can we clarify, are we voting on the SPR? Okay, for fifteen East Pleasant Street or eleven East Pleasant, are we going to do those separately, or?
We were, we're combining those two, both of them, so the, you know, the. Eleven and thirteen East Pleasant Street is SPR twenty twenty-one twelve. And then the fifteen East Pleasant Street is SPR twenty twenty-one oh nine.
And we're voting to close the hearing, right?
For those. Two site plan review. Bumbling those together.
A little confused.
Okay. So with regard to closing the hearings, so those two site plan review hearings, Maria?
I think. Made the motion initially said they wanted to accept everything, not just close the public hearings, but to accept things, so is that what you're voting on?
I don't know.
Doug's initial motion was to close. Accept the findings and conditions, and then I I believe he was saying to approve this, all of the. Permits for.
Okay, I mean.
And I stepped back and said, don't do that, because. I'm not sure that everybody's going to vote in favor of everything, I I would guess that you would probably get a positive vote for the site plan reviews. And so I suggested that you close the public hearing, accept the conditions and findings for the two site plan reviews and and approve those two applications.
And you are correct, that I think that's, that is what. Was amended. And so, sorry about that, sorry for the confusion, so. Everybody clear on? On what we're voting on here? I think, I think what you just said, Chris has nailed it, so. All right, Maria? Oh, yeah, Johanna, every. Okay.
Sorry, I, I am not totally clear, are we? Is this for the whole enchilada, or is this just to close the hearings?
And then? The whole enchilada?
To, whole enchilada, great.
Yeah.
No.
No, it's not, okay.
One, let's do it one at a time. How about if I make a motion and then somebody else says, I move that? How does that work, is that good? Okay, so. This is putting words in somebody's mouth, but this is about. Eleven and thirteen East Pleasant Street. SPR twenty twenty-one dash twelve for eleven and thirteen East Pleasant Street, this is the site plan review. To close the public hearing, to approve the application with the findings and conditions as written and the waivers as written. As as amended.
Okay, so moved. You have a second?
Second.
All right, second?
I'm sorry, I did not see who did the first, who?
I moved it.
Jack. You, Jack moved.
And then.
Mr. Marshall too.
Yeah. Okay, so this is on the eleven and. And thirteen, a site plan review, any discussion? Okay, let's go to vote. Oh, Andrew?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, as I still need to abstain from this, Chris, since we're combining the closing with. The approval.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Which is fine, I'm just. And and even though we did like the site plan review, like the. We discussed these in their entirety today, I still can't vote on them.
Certainly, yeah.
Okay, that, thank you for clarifying.
Alrighty, so. Let's move the vote, Maria?
Approve.
And. Andrew, you're abstaining, correct?
Yes.
All right, Doug?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Janet?
No.
Johanna?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, so it's five one. Great, so.
So the next one would be the site plan review for fifteen East Pleasant Street. Which would be to close the public hearing for SPR twenty twenty-one dash oh nine. For fifteen East Pleasant Street, and this is for the accessory use of that property. And you're closing the public hearing, you're accepting the findings and conditions as. Discussed and as amended, and the waivers as requested. And approving this site plan review application.
Very good. That was Tom?
Yeah.
Okay. Someone want a second? McCann is Doug? Any further discussion? See none, okay, roll call, Maria?
Approve.
Andrew abstaining, okay, Doug?
Approve.
Tom?
Bro.
Janet?
Is, is this for fifteen East Pleasant or?
Correct.
Oh, yes, it's fine.
Okay, Johanna?
Approve.
And myself is an I.
So that's six with one abstention.
Yes.
Next one is special permit for. Site for setbacks, site setback on the north side of the building and the height. So that would be the special permit SPP twenty twenty-one oh two. Send, you're closing the public hearing. You're approving this special permit for. A five-foot setback on the north side of the building and for the height of fifty-seven feet. And you're approving the findings and conditions and waivers and approving this. Special permit application.
Is the rear setback included in that?
No. It's written here on the agenda because it was initially asked for that way, but we discovered that he needed another special permit. Under nine point two-two to accommodate the the rear. The rear setback, okay? So. Understand? Initially, he applied special permit for site setback, height and rear setback. But we determined Rob Mara and I afterwards that he needed a different kind of special permit for the rear setback. So you're not, you're not approving that part of this under this item, so we would exclude the rear setback from this vote.
Rear setbacks, next item.
That's right.
So, oh, that's, that's twenty twenty-one dash oh two?
Twenty twenty-one dash oh two is what we're voting on now.
Right.
But you're excluding the rear setback.
Okay.
Because the rear setback is taken care of under a different special permit application.
Which is oh three?
It's oh three, that's right, yeah.
Okay.
So.
All right.
For oh two, you're just approving the site setback of five feet and the height of fifty-seven feet.
I'll move.
Okay. I'll second. Any discussion? I see none, so we'll do a roll call for, for this, Maria?
Approve.
And Andrew?
Ian.
Doug?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Janet?
No.
Johanna?
Hi.
And I am an I as well.
Okay, so you have one more, and this is special permit SPP twenty twenty-one oh three. And it is a special permit for a non-conforming building to be structurally altered, enlarged, or reconstructed under section nine point two-two of the zoning bylaw for mixed-use building. And you are closing the public hearing and you are approving the findings and conditions and approving the special permit.
Anyone?
Don't move.
Don't move.
Okay, Tom?
I'm moved, and who seconded?
I'll second, this is Maria.
All right, Maria's second. Okay, any discussion amongst the board? I see none, we'll do a roll call. Maria?
Approve.
And Andrew staying? Okay, Doug?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Janet?
No.
Johanna?
Hi.
And I am an I. So.
I think that's it.
Okay, is Kyle with us, does he want to take care of the one?
Please, I'd like to, I'd like to use whatever language I need to use to withdraw without prejudice. So I guess it's, I'd like to request to withdraw without prejudice.
And that would be the application that is listed as SPR twenty twenty-one oh seven.
Okay.
And to close the public hearing.
All right.
Might as well, so, so someone should move to close the public hearing and approve the withdrawal with the prejudice.
Don't move.
Okay. Tom moved.
Second.
And Doug second, any discussion? I seen on Maria?
Approve.
And Andrew?
I.
I.
I can vote for this one, right?
Oh, good, yeah, yes.
I think you can.
Yeah. Doug?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Janet?
Um, hi.
And Johanna?
Hi.
And I'm an I.
Thank you.
So. All right. So, I think we. We're meeting next. I think we just go to the end of the agenda, because we're meeting next week, right, so.
That's right.
Report to the chair and then report to staff. Just meeting next week, right? Thank you, a lot of hard work.
I'd like to thank everybody, I appreciate it.
Everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For all the time.
Good night.
Thanks for coming, yeah, all the way.
I hope, I hope I broke a world record.
Traveling the greatest.
I can't believe it.
It's five AM here.
Five AM.
Yeah, I've done all-nighters in design school, so this is normal, but let me know if you need me next week, but hopefully not, but if you do, I can call in late.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Bye everyone.